Good evening and welcome to the May 13th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the City of Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city website, and the meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission.
State law establishes planning commissions. This planning commission is comprised of nine residents appointed to serve a community. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. Other individuals participating in the meeting include representatives of the city's planning department, city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle-Wootman Associates.
If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward to the lectern when recognized and clearly print your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. If you have a cellphone or any other device that might disrupt this meeting, please either switch it to silent mode or turn it off. At this time, I ask the Planning Commission Recording Secretary Kathy Zarnicki to conduct the roll call.
Mr. Beekner?
Here.
Ms. Malala-Hawley?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Faison?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Ms. Parakis?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Quorum President, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we'll do the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion for that?
I'm on.
Mr. Faison, seconded by Mr. Beekner. Any discussion? All right, we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Ms. Malala-Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the minutes from our April 22nd, 2025 meeting. Do we have a motion? Ms. Malala-Hawley, seconded by Mr. Lambert. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Ms. Malala-Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to public comment for items that are not on the agenda tonight. If anyone is here to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and sign in.
Do I have to sign in next time, too? This is just a...
Yep. Yeah, go ahead and sign in, and then when you, if you speak again, you won't need to sign in again.
Okay.
And if you could also introduce yourself to everyone.
I will, just a second.
Yeah, sure. And we'll give you three minutes. Mr. Savant will, or Mr. Carlisle's will set the timer.
Okay. This is just general commentary. First 242 pages for tonight. You guys are a lot of reading. I first want to express, oh, Mary Ellen Barden. I first want to express my sincere gratitude to this commission for the time and effort you dedicate to planning for the city of Troy. From the few meetings I have attended, it is clear you take your notes, your roles seriously and work thoughtfully to address the concerns of the community while upholding the vision of the master plan. That said, I would like to offer a suggestion. I believe it'd be helpful if Mr. Savant's office, whose staff are compensated for their time, could create a concise cheat sheet of briefing materials for commissioner members ahead of each meeting. These summaries could ensure that commissioners are fully informed on key issues before discussions. At a recent meeting, it became apparent that there was some confusion around certain topics of law, which unfortunately led to a loss of valuable time. Considering that you are volunteering your time on behalf of this community, I believe it is reasonable to expect the city staff to provide you with the tools and context needed to be effective in your roles. After all, it is also their responsibility to serve and advocate for the community. Thank you again for your time and dedication.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our planned unit development. It's PUD 021, JPLN 2024-12, Proposed Somerset West Concept Development Plan and Preliminary Development Plan for Phase 1A, North Side of Big Beaver, West Side of Coolidge, 3100 West Big Beaver, PIN 88-20-19-476-002, 88-20-19-476-003, and 88-20-19-430-004. Section 19, presently zoned, PUD Planned Unit Development Zoning District. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Carlisle for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. I have a pretty fairly brief presentation. Mr. Savant and I started the timer for the last speaker and we forgot to stop it. Just a reminder to the Planning Commission, to the public, this is a PUD, and a PUD in our ordinance is a three-step process. Right now, we are at step one and step two. So the first step is a concept plan. There's two parts to a concept plan. The first is a concept development plan. It's more a planning document. It's more graphically focused. It talks about land use, layout, circulation, open space. And really, the intent of that is a layman can pick it up, a resident can pick it up, planning permission can pick it up, look at it, and understand the general concept of what is supposed to be happening at this site. The second component to a concept plan is the PUD agreement. This is actually the legal document that gets adopted by the city council, and it focuses on timelines, responsibilities, and conditions of approval. The intent is these mirror each other, they match with each other, so that both there's a legal framework as well as a concept framework of what the proposed development's going to look like. Again, for both of these, the Planning Commission is a recommending body on this matter. Step two is a preliminary development plan, and it's similar to a preliminary site plan. It includes a detailed site landscape, site plan, landscape plan, et cetera. And again, the Planning Commission is a recommending body on this. The applicant tonight is looking for a concept development plan for the entire site, as well as a preliminary development plan for Phase 1A. I'll show you what that is. So there's two parts tonight the Planning Commission's considering. The third step is the final development plan. Again, similar to the final site plan that the Planning Commission is familiar with. However, that's approved administratively, and that's the third step to this process. So again, the Planning Commission tonight is a recommending body on step one and step two. With regards to the concept plan, it is the same as what the Planning Commission last considered at its meeting. It includes 500,000 square feet of office. These are maximums, I should say. 500,000 square feet of office, 300,000 square feet of retail, 250-room hotel plus amenities, and 750 residential units. Again, this, the intent was to mirror the existing PUD on-site, so there is a one-for-one ratio with regards to square footage. We do note that the University of Michigan is attempting to acquire 17 acres, and I'll show you where that's going to be, but it's primarily in the rear of the site. In the front of the site, it's adjacent to Big Beaver, is intended for a mix of uses, including residential office and retail. The Planning Commission last considered this on April 22nd of this year, and there were eight conditions that the Planning Commission spoke with the applicant with regards to coming back to address. The first was specifying the 17 acres that's anticipated to be purchased by University of Michigan. The use diagram in front of you indicates those 17 acres. I believe, you know, 13 or 14 of them are on the south side of Cunningham. It's outlined in red. It's that big kind of T in the back of the site. And then there's three or four acres that are on the north side, north of Cunningham. Those in total equal 17 acres, and that is equal to what's shown in the PUD agreement. The second condition asked for was show how the University of Michigan will develop the 17 acres. The applicant notes that at the meeting shown on April 22nd, a concept image was shown. That is what the university intends to construct. They also know that material samples will be provided to the Planning Commission. However, they do note that the university does not have any future drawings or plans to demonstrate full expansion. There was some discussion of the Planning Commission about those kind of wing parcels we talked about that were at-grade parking, what the future of those would look like. And again, the applicant showed concept plans, but there's no detailed plans to demonstrate that at full build-out. The third condition was removing the following permitted use list, repair shop, trade school, drive-through hardware store, appliance, town homes, single-family homes, nursing home. The applicant has removed a number of those uses. However, they do want to keep town homes and a single drive-through use for a financial institution into the permitted use list. The Planning Commission asked them to reevaluate the open space south of U of M. It's currently a one-acre in size. The Planning Commission asked them to consider increasing that. The applicant notes that the size of the one acre remains unchanged, and they have submitted a narrative in your packet to describe why no expansion is being proposed. The Planning Commission then asked for, to specify square footage, including a minimum as well as the maximum for both residential, retail, office, and hotel use. The applicant notes that the current PUD on place does not include development, I should say, I'm sorry, only includes development maximums, does not include development minimums, and they're requesting, they're requesting to not be required to put development minimums in there to ensure future flexibility as the market changes. So they are not, at this point, seeking to put minimums into their square footages. The Planning Commission asked for a little more detail with regards to a phasing timeline. The phasing diagram has been updated. There are five phases. The first phase going forward is that kind of, I guess it would be a brownish color. That's where the U of M facility is primarily being located, in the open space. You can see it kind of extending south of Big Beaver is planned for first construction. And then there's future phases, four future phases after that. One of the things the Planning Commission asked for was a more detailed timing of when each phase would be completed, and the applicant did not provide more specific timing with regards to when the phasings would occur. The applicant, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission asked to narrow the scope of uses in the use diagram. We do note that they have narrowed the list of uses for the University of Michigan parcels. However, the, what's called the private development parcels are the parcels that are not acquired by University of Michigan. The use list for those parcels do remain as indicated in the previous application. And again, the applicant has expressed a desire to retain maximum flexibility based on changing market conditions. And lastly, the Planning Commission asked the applicant to provide a narrative with regard to the PUD standards. The applicant has provided that to you in your packet. Kind of leads ourselves to the next point, which are the standards. Again, there are very specific standards the Planning Commission should consider with regards to the PUD. There's actually 19 of them, and they're listed in Section 11.3. But primarily, they deal with consistency with the master plan, compatibility of a mixture of uses, the public improvement or public facility benefit, a material, recognizable material benefit, long-term protection of natural resources, natural features, et cetera, appropriate land use transitions and buffers. Is there a compatible mix of open space, landscape, and pedestrian amenities? Is there a use of innovative and creative site design, building design solutions? Is there a desirable qualities of urban, dynamic urban environment? And lastly, will the PUD mitigate potential impacts on the transportation system in non-motorized facilities? So again, these are conditions, I'm sorry, these are standards that the Planning Commission should consider with regards to the PUD. Now we move on to the preliminary development plan. This is again, step two of the three-step process of a PUD. So Phase 1 is that kind of outlined in the gray there. It's the ability to grade the site, install the private roads if you're internal to the site, as well as prepare the site for underground utilities. Outside of the lots or parcels designed for the constitutional corporation, each individual lot that comes in, or use that comes in, would come in for preliminary site plan approval in the future. So those areas that are boxed out would come in for site plans in the future. Again, the Planning Commission is a recommending body on the preliminary development plan. So we, in conclusion, we're asking the Planning Commission to review the application, consider the CDP if it meets the PUD standards, as well as consider Phase 1A if it meets the preliminary site plan standards set forth in Section 806. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Does anyone have any questions for the planning department? Mr. Fox?
I just want to make sure I understood the diagram from the page regarding which 17 acres are being designated for the University of Michigan. So it is the T in the back, and then it's that entire...
My red, my red outline, the dot.
And then north of Cunningham, it's that whole thing. Okay, cool.
So everything else here, here, and all this down here would be for private?
Okay.
For private, all.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have a question for the planning department?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. The applicant, I can't remember if you mentioned this in your presentation, but the applicant stated that they're only required to provide 15% open space, and then they say they have 26% open space south of Cunningham. I'm just wondering where that 15% number came from.
The 50% is a standard, is required as part of a Big Beaver zoning. So if this were, in theory, zoned Big Beaver, which if it's not PUD, it would most likely be zoned Big Beaver, the 50% is the requirement in the Big Beaver form-based zoning district.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure where that came from. And then I do have a couple of questions for Ms. Dufresne, if that's okay. We just talked about the, asking the applicant to specify the 17 acres that's anticipated to be purchased by, you know, University of Michigan. The applicant responded by referring us to that illustration. Then, in the PUD agreement, under Section 40, I'm wondering, does that verbiage render the illustration essentially an illustration just for illustration purposes, and it's not binding? Or are we saying that this red line trumps the verbiage in Section 40 of the PUD?
Well, no. The PUD agreement itself and the concept development plan are supposed to be, supposed to work together, and they're supposed to be consistent. My understanding is this is what is contemplated to be sold to the University of Michigan as we sit here today. That could change. Obviously, the applicant can tell us exactly what the options are for the University of Michigan. Paragraph 40 of the PUD agreement just talks about 17 acres, and the 17 acres aren't designated within the PUD agreement itself, anything specific, other than to reference to this use diagram.
Okay. So we could, as part of the PUD agreement, ask that we reference it so we would all be on the same page as to what the 17 are and reword it?
My suggestion is if you have any specific recommendations that this body wants to give to city council, assuming this moves forward to city council, if there are specific recommendations that you want city council to consider as it moves this process forward, that should be in your resolution. So is that, if that is something that this body wants city council to consider, that should be part of your recommendation in your resolution.
Okay. And then another question, this one's regarding timing. Item 27 of the PUD, which is on page 100, I'm wondering, does that trump the provisions of our zoning ordinance in terms of timing and phasing? Or would the applicant still be subject to the timing as it's outlined in our zoning ordinance, specifically Sections 11.06F, 11.07F, 11.08, and 11.11?
So I just want to make sure, when you say, when you say Section 27, you mean paragraph 27?
Yeah, right.
I just want to make sure we're talking about the same page.
Yes, correct.
So paragraph 27 talks about the applicant's proposal for phasing. And your question, if I'm understanding it, is with respect to what the zoning ordinance says about timing?
Correct.
So the zoning ordinance outlines, once concept development approval is given, your concept, the applicant's concept development approval is good for five years. But once a preliminary development plan is approved, that five years kind of ends. And keep in mind that they're already asking for preliminary, so the five-year concept development plan really doesn't matter anymore, because they're already getting their first preliminary development plan.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
So that's where the Pavilions of Troy ran into a problem, right? They, that group never came with any preliminary development approval request. So they're already going, assuming this moves forward, they're already going to get their first preliminary development plan. So that, that five years doesn't matter, right?
Uh huh.
Okay, you got, that makes sense?
Yep.
Okay. So then, with this back to the preliminary development plan, I believe PDP approvals are good for three years. Is that, is that correct? So you're quite...
Good for, sorry, they're good for three years, and the applicant then has three years to, to initiate final development approval. I can tell you just anecdotally, the, at their risk, the applicant's been working with engineering on the details. So we expect them to act very swiftly. If this were to proceed forward, we can expect them to get final approval from engineering very quickly.
Okay. So I guess then, the answer is, even though we haven't been able to get them to give us exact timing in the PUD agreement, they are still bound by the zoning ordinance timelines?
Well, I want to be clear. The PUD, so there's, the zoning ordinance requires that there is a provision in the PUD agreement that talks about if there's a conflict between the zoning ordinance and the PUD agreement, the PUD agreement controls. So that means that there isn't, there aren't specific phasing programs, there aren't specific phases outlined in paragraph 27. But I would suggest that there may, there isn't necessarily a conflict, I guess what I would say is there isn't necessarily a conflict between the zoning ordinance and the PUD agreement, that the phasing plan isn't, isn't inconsistent with the zoning ordinance. I know that didn't make any sense. What I'm trying to say is, paragraph 27, they're going to fill in these blanks. They haven't been filled in yet, about the number of phases. I believe it's five, right? Oh, you put it up. Oh, thank you. Look at you, prepare. So their revised concept development plan indicated that they were going to have a maximum of five. So after this body makes its recommendations to city council, Mr. Jacob and I will go back and fill, fill in these blanks.
Okay. Because what I read here, I'm going to just read, quote, "After owner has obtained all necessary approvals to commence construction or development of any portion or phase of the PUD property, owner shall be permitted, but is not required, to commence construction and development of any such portion or phase of the PUD property at any time that the owner elects in owner's sole discretion, and the city shall be obligated to promptly review and process any requests relating thereto and requested by owner as provided for under the PUD ordinance." So that's what I'm getting, sort of getting at. There, it sounds like no guidelines. And that's where I was just trying to see the synergy.
Right. So the PUD agreement is going to control over the city's zoning ordinance. So again, if there's something that, something specific that you want city council to consider as it moves this process forward, with respect to having, for example, if you want there to be a provision that says that the applicant has to comply with the zoning ordinance timelines, the three years that we just talked about.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But again, that's, you'd be making that recommendation for city council. City council can choose to abide by it or not abide by that recommendation.
Okay, okay. Sounds great. Okay, does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Fox?
I guess I do have just a quick follow-up. And I say this, my, my personal intention is that we either vote up or down, and we don't postpone this again. But if we do attach recommendations for city councils to consider, would that be, like, inserted under the subject to the following section of the motion, like it typically is? Or like, how do we designate specifically? Okay, I'm getting nods from Mr. Savant. Okay.
Right. No, it would just be as part of your...
It would just be part of, okay.
...of your resolution.
Cool.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. So if no one else has questions for the planning department, oh, sorry, Mr. Tagle.
Did you throw up the 2025 concept plan a little? Well, that'll do, Ben. There's a rectangle that would be northwest of the proposed U of M medical building.
Mr. Tagle, what slide do you want?
What slide did you want?
Slide 19.
From which document?
PUD, or the P...
The PDF?
PDF, yeah.
The agenda packet.
Page 19?
Yeah. There you go. All right, there's a, just, just north to the west end of the medical building, there's a white rectangular box. Has the petitioner indicated what that box is?
Just to be clear, talking about this box right here, right?
Yep.
I believe it has some, it's some sort of mechanical function for the medical facility, but they can clarify that.
All right.
I believe it's a, it's this mechanical feature necessary for the medical facility, but the applicant can answer that in more detail.
All right. I think we're ready to invite the applicant up, if he'd like to come up.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thanks for having me back.
Yep.
Do I have a clicker? Thank you, Brent. Just wanted to bring you back to 1996. This was when the Detroit Free Press and the Detroit News were a merged newspaper and used to publish jointly on the weekends. And the front page of the Detroit News Detroit Free Press Sunday Edition, as we opened Somerset Collection North and tied the two centers together with a 700-foot moving skywalk, probably the first and largest one done in the United States of America, termed Troy as downtown Michigan. And this really needs to be understood for those of us who have been around, my partner Stanley Frankel, our two families have been a part of this community for 60 years. We've been stewards of this community. We've been partners of this community. I don't think we've ever steered this community wrong. We opened a shopping center here back in the 1990s, and we've spent the last 30 years ensuring that we reinvested in that property every year to maintain the highest standards in the shopping center industry, both from service perspective, a maintenance perspective, a security perspective, a design perspective, and probably the most important thing is that we follow a philosophy that we've held true to our hearts and never deviated from. And that's to have the best-in-class retail strategy leasing for the past 30 years. We were sitting around the office today. This center has turned over almost 3.2 times since we opened in 1996. So we have 600,000 square feet of in-line mall space that we've turned over, almost 2 million square feet of that in-line mall space. And what that means is constant reinvestment in retailers, the hottest and latest and best concepts, I think I mentioned last time. 45% of our stores are their only stores in the state of Michigan. So when people talk about trade areas, we don't have a trade area. We are your downtown. We don't have a Michigan Avenue. We don't have a... We don't have a Michigan Avenue, we don't have a Fifth Avenue, we don't have a Rodeo Drive. We have Somerset Collection, and we have the partnership that we share with this city. So as we go through this process, and believe me, I didn't take lightly last meeting, listening to what all you had to say, this is an iterative process. We are learning as we go. We are pushing the University of Michigan. We have a voice at the table. I'm in every call and every meeting. And you have to take some comfort in the fact that we are there not only representing our interests, we're representing the interests of the Somerset Collection, the entire Big Beaver corridor, and the entire city of Troy. Whatever's written on a piece of paper, I can tell you, I don't look at, I don't care about. What I care about is my word. And my word that we are going to do what's right by the city, we are going to do what's right by the citizens, and we're going to do what's right by this community, as we have done for the past 60 years. I mean, you can see your beautiful skyline, this was the old Kmart headquarters, 950,000 square feet of Corten steel that was torn down in anticipation of a University of Michigan medical facility being the anchor of this 40-acre development. We demoed, we remediated all of the yuck that was in the building accumulated, we did all the underground remediation, and we are ready for vertical development in what once housed over 4,000 employees. You know, from day one, as we came in here, we talked about developing these east-west, north-south nodes, as we call them, and trying to tie together some type of identity for this site as the gateway to the city of Troy, and kind of a promenade of sorts that we can tie together our uses as we begin to iterate our design and our different uses as to what will be. We know one thing, we will have a mixed-use project. We will not be all one use. We will be many uses that will tie together through a thread of pedestrian walkways, public space, and beautiful landscaped areas. The 1.1 acre park, we did not increase, as the resolution had mentioned, because we don't know what our uses are going to be out front. We are talking to many people right now. We are in negotiations. We don't know what the ultimate parking requirements are going to be, we don't know what the ultimate size of those pads are going to be. But I will tell you one thing, the minimum we're going to do is build that football field in front of you, and it is going to be the nicest football field in Oakland County. And if it can be bigger, as we get through this iterative process over time, we will make it bigger, it will not get smaller. And that is our commitment to the city and its citizens. Again, you see the two pieces of property. One is the University of Michigan south of Cunningham Road, which is what's been approved by the regents, which is 250,000 square feet of a four-story, it's actually two and four-story in the middle, and I'll show you the design on this project. And then conceptually, what is known as Parcel 1A to the north, on the northwest portion of the site, which is north of Cunningham Drive, a conceptual drawing of what could be a soon-to-be expanded area of this process, of this building. This is the plan, as we're in front of you this evening, again, highly iterative. This is what the rendering looks like that we're in for on approval on the conceptual plan today. Again, each one of these projects that do not include University of Michigan will be back in front of this council and commission as we begin to work through the uses, the densities, the heights, the parking requirements. There is a lot involved, as you all can imagine and you've all seen over the years. And this is a contemplated conceptual expansion plan. As I mentioned last time, the University of Michigan, and I'll get into some of the economic drivers and the psycho and demographic information the University of Michigan provided us as part of this development, but there is already a conceptual expansion thought that this building, this project, will need to be bigger. So we had to eliminate the deck for cost reasons and for expansion reasons to allow this facility to get larger, and there was only one way to do it, and that is out the north side, which would then initiate parking structures on the northeast and the northwest, smaller pieces of property that you see on this drawing, which I am outlining here in red. But again, this is conceptual in nature at this point. This is it in rendered form, the building popping out the back on a conceptual expansion plan with the parking decks, hopefully that's what it will look like on an ultimate build-out basis, again, conceptual. And this is what we are in for today. This is the University of Michigan facade as it will be built. This is not a schematic design, this is an actual design. Again, this is the south elevation of the four-story in the middle, stepping down to two stories on either end. This is the north elevation, which is where they'll have their major drop-off for the facility, with a nice covered portico share drop-off, beautiful entrance, four-story facade. And the whole design vision of the University of Michigan really, as it relates to this Troy development, is to convey a trusting, stable sensibility, transparent, approachable, and welcoming environment. The material palette that you see in front of you has actually been selected. We're looking at a masonry facade in a buff color brick to harmonize with all the adjacent facilities, primarily the Somerset Collection. There's going to be a very large use of expansive glass to convey openness to the community, metal accents to convey the innovation and technical expertise that Michigan is bringing to this community. This will be, again, I mentioned last time, its first presence in Oakland County, and they do not take that lightly. The building form will be a very symmetrical four-story building anchored by a larger two-story foundation. Entrances are centered both on the north side and the south faces of this building. The prominent north entrance is designed to be a focal point and an arrival and drop-off and pickup destination, and it will be demonstrated via their LEED certification. What's next for the University of Michigan? I think we had this conversation on the previous meeting. The completion of construction drawings, as we stand today, construction documentation is greater than 50% complete. University of Michigan plans on launching construction mid-June of this year, so we're talking about 45 to 60 days from now, with an opening for patient care in the spring or summer of 2027. And their priority, and what drives them with their vision and their priority, is to bring world-class care closer to home for the residents of Oakland County and beyond. And at the base of it all is to consider the strategic expansion opportunities in the future, as they look at Oakland County as a major hub and opportunity to expand their reach for world-class care. Some of the economic impacts will be transforming this largely 20-year vacant property into a quarter of a million square feet as a destination for world-class specialty healthcare for this community. Investing capital funds of over $250 million. And you can see on the upper right side, improving access closer to home, is that 32% or 190,000 of unique patients are seen at University of Michigan Health in fiscal year '24. Those are visits to their other healthcare facilities that originate from Oakland and Macomb and Wayne Counties. Projected annual volume is to be greater than 200,000 visits and encounters a year, or 750 visits per day at this facility for patients to be able to get their care closer to home. Job creation you see on the lower-left side, salary and wages, and of course, the impacting, impact of the local spending by employees, patients in the region, housing, food, retail, entertainment, and other, as they draft a lot of uses behind them. This is what they've done in some of the other communities, Livingston, Washtenaw, Wayne, and Oakland County, all under the umbrella of a constitutional corporation, which I urged everybody to reach out to some of these other communities and maybe some of your other peers, to find out what kind of corporate citizens and corporate partners the University of Michigan is when they enter a community and make a quarter of a billion-dollar investment. Again, this is the 12 acres on the south side of Cunningham, the five acres to the north side of Cunningham. You've seen these aerial renderings before. This is, I'm going to go to the next view, this is a conceptual medical facility of a specialized-type building. This is what is in concept phase, conceptual at this point, on that north four or five acres, the north side of Cunningham. So they have, I think we were asked by John Tagle if they had any plans for that future building, and this is what the concept of that two-story facility north of Cunningham would look like sitting south of the residential properties. Again, using a lot of the same materials, masonry, stone, metal, glass, very inviting, very welcoming materials, very low-profile, low-scale, very beautiful, very welcoming to the community. Again, at Bird's Eye View off of Big Beaver, this is that football field or that 1.1 acre park, that looking towards the Michigan South entrance as we begin and develop some density around it. And that's what I have for the Planning Commission this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Forbes? Yep.
Really more of a comment. Thank you. It was, it's really great that you brought for, answered our questions for one, but second, brought in the concept designs themselves, the actual ones. I think it's, I'm sold, I love it. I just, the only item I have to talk about, again, is that screening between the three single-family homes and your development, is that 100-foot green space. Can you describe what you envision for that green space?
So the 100-foot buffer has not been looked at, we have not looked at it, but I will tell you that when we come in for our first, do we have, we don't have to come in for the Michigan Site Plan Approval, do we? I will give you my word, we will come in prior to that, and if you want, we will present something to this council or whatever form the city to take to reinforce that area as something that fits in with the overall landscaping of the property.
My, not just your development, but other developers that come in here, we always want to make sure it's screened enough so that headlights don't go into those homes.
That I will, I will give you my word, that will be taken care of.
That's all I needed, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Savadat wanted to jump in and-
Yeah, Mr. Forbes, I don't know if you've ever said it on the record, but I know a considerable cost went into demolition of a 975,000-square-foot building with nasty stuff, I believe asbestos and whatnot in there, plus the parking deck. Can you just roughly indicate how much was spent on that demolition?
Rob, was it about six and a half million? Six, six and a half million dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Tagle.
I want to personally thank you for coming back with some concept plans that U of M had been thinking about and developing, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So I'm looking for, there was a couple of images that had a conflict, and I just wanted to work those out. So like, for example, on page 76 of the, I mean, I'm sure you have it in your thing too, but I know it's on page 76 of the PDF.
Want to open the PDF?
Yeah, that'd be great. Because I don't know, otherwise we're going to be scrolling through your presentation. And it's really about those infrastructure roads, I think it's Road C and E.
76?
Yep, 76.
I don't see it there.
So C and E looks like, they don't look like they connect, but then if you were to go to, sorry to make you change it again, but if you were to go to page 19, it looks like the road that's north of the Michigan Office Building, it looks like it connects from Cunningham to Coolidge. So you know what I'm saying? It looks like you can, so, does it go through?
Yeah, that's, they're building that piece, so our public roads, we're in for approval. We're building those, and then they're building the road. It will connect all the way through to Cunningham and Coolidge.
Oh, okay.
That is their responsibility on their property, and we've engineered with them to connect those roads, is that correct?
Okay, thank you.
That will be, that will be a through road.
Okay, just wanted, just, you know, want a clarification. Then another, another thing I wanted to ask you a couple of questions about were the two uses that you kept that we had asked you to remove, or I had asked you. One are the drive-through, the drive-through for a financial institution, and the other is the townhomes. So let's start with the drive-through. I'm really thinking about it from a circulation standpoint, and I'm having a really hard time envisioning, when we look at that, for example, where are we anticipating or contemplating a drive-through bank?
I don't know that we have one contemplated. Now, if you recall, we have a drive-through right in the front of Somerset Collection South. We've had one there since day one. And it's screened, it's off the backside of the building, it's been a Bank of America before that standard federal branch for 40 years. You don't even notice it, the queuing, it's never an issue. And, you know, most of the financial institutions today, if we were to need one here, they would require a drive-through.
Right.
And we would hide it to a point where it would uninterrupted. We're not going to sacrifice the 40 acres for a one-acre financial institution drive-through, but a lot of them do require it, and we've had one right up on Big Beaver in front of Nima Marcus for 40 years.
I can picture that. I guess my concern would be, I wouldn't want you to use Big Beaver for-
We are not using our frontage for a financial drive-through. I could tell you that.
All right. And then the next, the next one was the townhomes. So I Googled townhomes to really understand what a townhome is. And what it is, I think, is a single-family, attached housing, multi-story, and it tends to imply that it's a ground, ground-floor entrance and usually has a driveway with a garage. So I'm having a hard time envisioning where you would put townhomes on this property.
I'm not sure that we would. It was in the previous PUD, so we left that in. If you remember, not too long ago, I believe, I don't know if Dominic Mosseri ever came in to this commission with a plan on the north 12 acres to build 85 townhomes, which were absolutely stunning and beautiful, but again, the consent judgment does not allow for it, which the city is party to. There will not be townhomes on the south 20 acres, and my guess is there may never be on the north 12 acres. But it was in, we left it in as another form of housing.
So I guess, I'd like to see it removed, because if you were to put it on the north side of, north of Cunningham, which would, for me, be the only place that it could work, that would come under an agreement, you know, with a consent judgment. So if it's not going to be south of Cunningham, it seems to me like we should just get rid of it. That's, you know, what I would be looking for. Okay, those are, I mean, I'm going to just say one other thing with this image being You have height diagrams, and you're showing the minimum being 20 feet on that U of M property. So what that tells me is if U of M weren't to have that property, there'd have, there wouldn't be allowed to be any parking, surface parking on that land. Because it's Michigan, I get it, they don't have to do that. So, but, but it does say that if it's, doesn't go to the University of Michigan, there'd have to, there'd be no surface parking on those lots, based on that image. Just want to clarify that.
I don't know that I read it that way.
It's a minimum of 20 feet?
It's a building height minimum, yeah. It's not a parcel height minimum, across the entire parcel, it's a building height minimum. So whatever buildings are on that parcel have to be a minimum of 20 feet.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else, Ms. Malala Halli?
Just a quick question, because I've been thinking about the surface parking lot, and I know that is not part of what you are going to be building, but have you ever had a chat with University of Michigan regarding underground basement-level parking, considering sometimes the weather is a hamper? This is a medical facility, we may have people visiting on wheelchairs or elderly folks coming to this facility, and with so much parking, surface parking, they are going to be walking in those kind of weather conditions. Has there ever been a consideration of creating basement parking? Because your Somerset has basement parking, I love that. Whenever I come-
Who has it? Who has underground parking?
Your Somerset Mall.
Covered parking, deck parking, deck, not underground.
Sorry, yes. I use it, I use it a lot. What I mean to say is, if there were something underground, under the building-
Yeah.
I know there is a future concept in place where that might be the reality, but not for now, and that could change too, right? Has there ever been a talk about providing?
The challenge with underground parking today in today's world is, you probably are looking at $80,000 per parking space, per stall, to do underground parking. By the time you excavate, de-water, shore up, pour your concrete, it's, do your ramp system, it is cost-prohibitive unless literally you're in New York City going up 40, 50, 60 stories. It's just, in the state of Michigan, it's not a common thing to go underground, because the cost is just so prohib- the cost is just so prohibitive, and so, anywhere between literally $70,000 and $90,000 per space to go underground. It's just cost prohibitive.
So, from that point of perspective, then, either this will remain surface parking or potentially parking decks will be, but nothing else can be.
That's correct. Not today, not today.
Not today, yes.
Correct.
But in the future, 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road, it could potentially become parking decks.
Correct.
Or remain the same.
Correct.
Am I correct? Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, so I want to start by saying that I very much appreciate you taking the comments that we had from last meeting and going through and addressing all of them. I also appreciate the concept development plans, very appreciated. I was also a party to the whole striking of specifically the townhomes and the banks, and I have since, I may have been scolded by some housing advocacy friends of mine after I got townhomes struck. I've since been a bit educated that townhomes are an important part of missing middle, an important option to leave available if possible. I understand that, you know, depending on how they work on here, you know, it might look a little bit wonky, but overall, I personally don't think it's a big issue if we leave the language for townhomes after, you know, the time we've had between the meetings. Also, as for the drive-through, I think that was a great example, bringing up that Bank of America. I banked at that Bank of America, and it was, again, never stacking issue, never an issue, set backing up on Big Beaver. So, if it's something like that, I think that works out for me, me personally.
Mr. Faison?
Yeah, echo some of the comments. I think it looks great. I appreciate you coming back with the additional detail. And the timeline for the U of M project, I was just curious about some of the subsequent phases, and I know you're not agreeing to timelines here, but just the dialogue you're having, and when they could potentially, when could, like, the next phase begin?
Well, listen, I can tell you that we have, are having conversations on all residual parcels of land as we speak. Obviously, the world's been a pretty crazy place the last 60 days, you know, I think the world's got to settle down before we know what we're dealing with in terms of tariffs, cost of importation of concrete, steel, drywall, and other things. So, we couldn't even hit the street today with pricing of a building. U of M is, they're bought out their job, and they're, they're ready to go, but we are working on every other parcel today, and my guess is, once we get past this phase and U of M gets in the ground, hopefully that'll all be coming in very subsequent short order.
Got it. Just to follow up, so U of M, would you potentially be doing something while U of M is being built?
Oh, for sure. No, 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 the intent is not to wait for U of M to open to do these, these remaining parcels. I hope to see multiple going on at one time.
Got it. Thank you.
One comment?
Go ahead.
Mr. Savinat.
So, could you provide a, kind of a peek behind the curtain, Mr. Forbes, regarding, you know, this is the corner of Maine and Main, obviously a really important parcel for southeast Michigan, but what kind of, what does the U of M presence do to change the game? Like, does it, does it raise the, does it raise the bar? Like, are you getting, you're probably getting great potential tenants contacting you if U of M wasn't there, but now that U of M is a presence, does it, does it raise the game? Make it easier for you to get high-quality tenants there?
Well, I think it does two things. Number one, it increases the interest in the Troy community. Whether people ultimately locate at this site or on the Big Beaver corridor, they're going to draft off the University of Michigan Medical Facility. It's just what happens, right? Ancillary uses, residual uses, medical uses, research and development uses. So, I think you're going to see a drafting effect with, on the, filling up vacant office buildings, and then that will come with it, opportunities for us to populate these remaining sites. So, but it also increases the level of awareness in terms of what you have to do to be worthy to be on this property. Michigan sets a certain level of standard. I mean, they're a public university, they're one of the top-rated universities in the world, and they come with it a standard, and they hold themselves to a high standard. And we hold ourselves to a high standard. So, I just, it raises all ships. I mean, I've seen it over and over in areas that we've developed across the country, and it just, it brings a certain level of certainty, stability, brand awareness to a community, and it just raises all ships.
Ms. Malala Hawley?
I believe last time when you were here, Mr. Forbes, you probably went over this information, but kind of just refresh my memory, that the grassy area in front of the 1.1-acre space, what did you say would be, because I know I saw multiple pictures in your packet the first time.
Yeah.
About you being used as an open-air theater or some band-like performance.
Yeah.
I saw movie screens, I mean, there were multiple pictures that you provided, but what's the vision that you have for that space?
Well, first of all, that public space, the backdrop of it has to be designed in a way that creates a certain level of serenity and calm, number one. So, wet grasses and trees and benches and hardscape and water, whatever, it all, art and what, we have to have, it has to be beautifully designed and cur, and landscaped before we can begin to bring the curation there. And then, over the course of the year, our teams at Somerset and our corporate teams will begin to populate that and curate that to bring, whatever they are, farmers' markets, food truck events, certain exhibitions, whatever they might be. Summers might be different than winters, but we will curate that throughout the year to bring a certain level of the community together that brings a certain level of awareness, not only Detroit, but to the whole Big Beaver corridor and Somerset Collection corner. So, we haven't, we haven't sat down to program what we're going to use it for, but our idea is to curate that, to always have a mix of ideas and uses and curations going on within that area. And there'll be times when it's just going to be dormant, and people can come and read a book and bring their kids and kick the ball and do whatever they want to do, but there'll be other times it'll be at a heightened sense of activity.
When it comes, so, I totally understand, when you're creating something like this, you obviously have some ideas about how this will be used, right? The space usage. What about, what about the timing of the usage of that space? Because University of Michigan Clinical Facility may not be open 24 hours, there may be majority of the offices that will be completely closed, right? But what about the public space? How do you envision that during, being used through the night, late-evening hours, kind of a thing?
Again, you know, it really, we will undertake an exhaustive study. We've already seen some of the great public spaces around the country and how they're used, and what brings good visits versus not-so-good visits, and we will make sure that we have good visits, time of day, time of year, certain events going on that, that might bring a certain level of interest in a community. And we don't have answers for all of that today. We just don't, but we have talked a lot about it.
Sure. No, because this is a nice space, and as you said, for public to get, to engage in, it's a promenade, it's a piazza. We want, we want multiple activities to happen throughout the year, right? Just a suggestion, if I may, DIA's outdoor painting, that would be a great one to do here, and any local artists, artisans, crafts that you can display year-round would be wonderful for the city of Troy, because we don't have much art around in the city. We would like to see more of those kind of things. Rolling Exhibits may be happening. That would just be my friendly suggestion.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Mr. Lambert?
Just a plug or a reminder, last fall, I think I asked you or mentioned to you, the city had the old Kmart reflective head or whatever they call it, and I know one or two members of the commission don't like it, but I think if you could work with the city to bring that back, because it would, not only is it a piece of art that some people may not like, but other people love it, it also has a historical tie to that site as being the former headquarters of Kmart, so hopefully you'll take a look at that.
Thank you. I will. Thank you.
Okay, I wanted, Mr. Savinat, could you pull up the page 39 of the packet? I mean, it's actually this. All right. So, this is the design and place-making page that you have in our packet, and it repeats actually 12 times. This is the concept plan that we're all talking about, right? This is it. You know what I'm saying? We've got everything here that we're talking about, and it's right here on this piece of paper, which to me should be the concept plan. And so, I'm trying to figure out why page 19 is labeled "Concept Plan," because this gives us much more assurances of what you're going to do at this site. It's everything we're talking about, everything we're all excited about, everything we want to see there.
Yeah. I'm not sure the concept plan differs much in terms of uses on the individual parcels. We have residential, office, retail. I think it's pretty much the same.
Will you call this your concept plan, then?
I'd have to go back and study it to make sure that.
What I'm getting at is this. Here, you, you know, you indicate the two properties on Big Beaver are retail or food and beverage.
Yeah.
And then, the east and west buildings, I think they say residential, office, retail.
Residential, office, retail.
Right? So, for us, that is the minimums, minimums that we were asking for, because it's there. We know we're getting two restaurants, at least, and we know we're getting retail and mixed use and some type of residential. That is everything we're talking about, what we want. So, then you swap, and then you swap in page 19 and call that the, put up number.
Show me 19, please.
And it's Lego pieces that doesn't show us really what we're getting.
Just the heights and the.
That's the height plan. You have the concept?
Got another one in.
Well, look at it, it's labeled "Concept Plan." That is the, that is, you have a concept plan, and then you write some, some maximums.
That's in the Carlyle Report. Let me, I'm going to go to 46.
All right.
46 and 47, yeah.
So, 46, and then 47 where you list out all the.
All the uses.
Well, actually, nope, it doesn't, it doesn't list the uses.
There's another one. There's another one in there.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's one of the same, in terms of the uses.
Right. So, so this is where.
Graphically, you might like the other one better.
Graphically, I definitely do, but let me tell you where I, where I, where I have the issue. It's on page 98, which is Article 3, Section 25 of the PUD, titled "The Concept Development Plan and Development of the PUD Property." So, the wording states, quote, "Owner shall have the right, but shall not be obligated to develop..." dot, dot, dot. And then it lists all that stuff, and then it lists the maximums. So, that's where the other picture is a little bit more, it shows a little bit more commitment. To me, it's just a balance, because we're all talking about the same thing, we're all excited about what you're showing us, everything looks great, but then, it's like, but we don't have to do any of it. I just wish that there was a little bit, and I guess maybe the question would be for our attorney, then, if, if all of these renderings and pictures are part of the packet, does that make them part of the concept development plan, that we can then rely on those pictures? So, we have some level of expectation that we're getting the restaurants on Big Beaver, and we're going to get a mixed-use development and retail and everything we're talking about and in agreement about. There's really no issue about the vision, for me, and I don't think anyone here, I think we all love it. We'd love to see the University of Michigan come, we love the design, we love what you're doing. I do think that there's some trust, for sure, for sure, but that, but then when, when the PUD is so one-sided in terms of the wording, it just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it and do right by the city, because that is our job. We're supposed to make sure we have the assurances that we need, that, that, you know, what you say is going to happen. And I just think that there's got to be a little bit of, I just, you know, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Dufrain to respond to it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Good luck, Julie.
So, I am a broken record, right? What do I say? We are trying to achieve the balance between predictability that this body wants, that the citizens want, that, that city council wants. The balance between predictability and flexibility. Mr. Forbes and his team wants as much flexibility as they can possibly get, so depending on market, market fluctuations, depending on what U of M's use ends up being, and how popular the site is, and who they can attract to come to this site, they want as much flexibility. So, this is, every time we have a PUD agreement, this is, this is the battle, finding, trying to find that balance. Candidly, this is, as you suggested, very geared in favor of Mr. Forbes and his team. But I think the trade-off is, we're getting development on a very important piece of property that has stood vacant for 18 years plus. We're getting, you know, the potential for an amazing development that hopefully has the potential of bringing many more development opportunities in and around just that, just that intersection there. So, I understand your concerns. Paragraph, what is it, 25 that you just quoted from does give them all of the flexibility that they're looking for. If you want to make, again, I'm just going to say, if there's a recommendation, if there's something specific that you want city council to consider in terms of making, even if it's something like you want them to commit to having at least three, you know, restaurants in that area, if there's something specific you want city council to consider in terms of, you know, the mixed uses, this is, this is your, this is your opportunity. But your observations are absolutely right. This is, we haven't found a perfect balance between flexibility and predictability, but I think, like I said, the trade-off is, is getting that project, this project moving forward.
I understand. I understand, and I just.
Listen, the hard thing for our, from our, I can't force a bank to loan us money, I can't force retailers and food and beverage operators to sign a lease. It is our strongest intention to build what we have before you today. The economy, market conditions, there's things involved that are beyond our control. We've been doing this collectively for probably 100 years, our two companies, and we'll find the balance, and we'll find the fiscal responsibility and the social responsibility of what we put forward today, and we'll find the balance and build a mixed-use project over the next several years, whether that's two or five or six, I can't tell you today. I'd certainly like market conditions to be a little more favorable right now for some of this stuff, but that will change, and things, you know, you can see how quickly things change every day, but I can't agree to build minimums when I don't know what the world's going to bring tomorrow. COVID almost destroyed our entire industry. I mean, we went 90 days with a closed shopping center. We didn't, we only had two tenants that paid rent in this shopping center. You can guess one of them was Apple, and the other one you might not guess. But we sat down, we had to negotiate with, outside of our portfolio, 505 lease amendments and tried to figure out how we're going to deal with COVID rent. We were closing some centers for 120, between 90 and 120 days. We had to pay our banks. Our banks wouldn't give us an inch of, of leeway. So, the Frankels and the Forbes, we continued to pay our, on our bank loan, we weren't getting rent in from our tenants, and we fought through that. And we're going to, we're going to build something here that's going to be representative of this community and the Somerset Collection, and to try to put in writing what those minimum and maximums are. We have a use diagram, we, I can't tell you if residential is going to be on this side or that side, or health and fitness here or there, food and beverage is one unit, three units. I can tell you, we're working on a lot of them right now, and it's just, a lot of things just, it's part of the development business.
Okay.
And it's what we do.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, and keep in mind, and we've, it's, it's worth repeating, this body will see the preliminary development plans again. It will have an opportunity each time a phase is, comes for approval, this body will see it. Mr. Forbes or whoever he appoints or designates will have to stand up in front of this body again and sell that preliminary development plan, and then he'll have to sell it again in front of city council. So, this is, this isn't the last time that we see these things. I understand your concern. They can come back with, with whatever, and what are they actually being bound to or tied to, because the PUD agreement is so flexible in their favor. But I, you're not, this isn't the last time you're going to see the, this project.
I understand.
You might wish it was the last time you saw me, but.
Mr. Fox?
And I think one thing that I say will probably factor into this conversation in terms of surety, predictability, you indicated while you were speaking about the University of Michigan has already made votes on this, they're like, ready to move forward on their part, and, you know, ideally, this gets approved by city council, it might get advanced by us, and then you sell that off to U of M, and then U of M will get started. So, I mean, that is some predictability, that regardless of what specifically goes into the southern portion of the property, the U of M site is going in.
It's going in.
And all of the things that are ancillary to that. And all of the things that are ancillary to that, the high property values, the draw that that's gonna bring is gonna happen regardless. So there is a level of predictability built in there for us, I guess, from my perspective.
And part and parcel with that is, once we close with them, is that we are ready, we're ready right now, we're negotiating our site work contract. So we are spending many millions of dollars to put the infrastructure in to develop the rest of this site. We're doing the underground, we're doing the retention, we're doing the roads, we're doing all of our work on Big Beaver that our offsites were committed to. So we're gonna spend eight figures to do all of the site infrastructure. We're not gonna let this property sit for 20 years. It's not gonna happen.
I'm just trying to make our attorney's job easier.
I appreciate that, Ms. Parakis.
Good point.
All right. Anyone else? Ms. Malala Hawley.
To add to what Commissioner Fox just mentioned, I feel that once University of Michigan's portion starts to get built, I anticipate you're going to probably have some kind of restaurant space being, because when you have so many people coming in there, not just visitors, the staff itself and the doctors and everybody else, I anticipate, I don't, I think you will definitely have the food space. Now, where you're gonna place it and how you're gonna place it, how many units, all that is of course left to be determined. But I don't, I don't fear that part. The only thing that I'm a little iffy about, which I think you will figure that one out too, is the office retail space. I know we have one item today on, in our agenda, where an office space, after trying hard to sell or lease the office space, they are now coming back with a different kind of a development for that area. So that's one thing that I don't know. As you mentioned, the market will dictate that. But I anticipate much of what you have here, and this particular color rendition being named the concept plan, is what I would suggest before you go into the City Council, because this looks more like a visionary of a PUD, that we, we on the Planning Commission would like to kind of put a vision to that. You are a builder, so you know your vision. You probably can close your eyes and envision what it will look like in its 3D space. I am not that. And so for me, this speaks more to me as to what a PUD is or a kind of an idea, a general idea, as to what I will be seeing, hopefully in the future, if not the same, but at least some similar setup. So if you can label this the concept plan, as Chair Parakis mentioned, and say that that would be the height requirements that you have for this particular land, that would be a nice way to kind of present it in a very dramatic way. Color renditions always speak volumes, right? You agree, I'm sure. So that's what I would like to say. But no, thank you for coming back. Thank you for giving us some of the concepts, which is very helpful for us to understand. Not all of us are real estate developers here. Some of us are in the education field, so we have no idea as to how this is going to be. But this helps us a lot.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. I think it's not a public hearing, but we're gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment if anyone's here to talk about this application. Go ahead, come on up.
Okay.
No, you're good.
Okay. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I am here to respectfully request that the city modify the current development plan and fully consider the concerns of the local residents during Phase 1. Traffic congestion, I haven't seen that report. I've driven here, it's bad already, so I don't, would like to see the traffic report. There is a clear inconsistency in how the easements have been adjusted. If you look on the east side, they get 15 acres, we get 100 feet. Why that big difference? If it was necessary for them, why don't we get it on our side? So I don't think it's a lot for me to ask that during Phase 1, we get a fence and proper landscaping to block some of the construction noise and... Also, there is no, as I said, they're not planning the landscape to buffer our homes from construction noise and for this project, but the future development of the north parcel, this is basic expectation for residents who will have to be living through this construction zone. So I think it's a good faith measure to actually buffer us before they get to us, so the trees have time to grow and, and just the amount of foot traffic would warrant a fence for our neighborhood, again, to not be flooded, inundated with people that wouldn't even know, don't even belong there. Some of the stuff that's been answered, I'm skipping around, I apologize. I'm not anti-development. I am excited for the development. I'm not too excited about that big tall, tall corner piece, but, you know, I'm really just concerned about how this will impact our homes and our peace that we've enjoyed for the 33 years I've been a resident of Troy. I have these pictures which I sent. I mean, this is what we look at every day, is dead trees, stumps that they just took out, sticks, weeds. I'm getting too old to take up the slack for them anymore. So I just think it would be a good faith measure for Forbes and Frankel to go ahead and start protecting us now. So when it does come to pass, we have big trees, so not looking at a 40-foot wall. So that's just what I'm asking for. And I've told my Mr. Savant that you have gotten these pictures. He made sure you got them all. You can see it is in very ill repair. And again, my side, again, I hate to say it big about me, but my particular property has, you can be 100 foot back, you can see in my living room, you can see, you can see my whole house. Because our berm is not as robust as the berm down the street. You know, just, just the next house over. You can only see their top windows. You can see, well, he's going through the pictures. Okay, that's, that's a fun thing that we have back there, a broken retaining wall and a thing. But I don't know, maybe this is another, so that's my house, I believe, but that's not, well, let me just find it. Basically, when you look at my house, you can see, this is another fun sight we have in the back of our house. This is my kitchen window, my door wall into my family room and my living room. I mean, I just don't have the berm. If you walk down just to the next house, you're up to their top windows. And you walk down further, you can't even see just the top of their windows. So I would like some special consideration for the fact that I don't have the protection that the other houses have for this development.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in. We did receive the pictures. Mr. Savant did send them to us and the applicant's here, and he heard your concerns. And that, that portion of the property is under consent judgment. So anything that comes before us, we will be making sure that there's the appropriate buffers.
But this commission has also mentioned several times, the consent judgment has been amended to appease whatever project comes along. And it certainly seems to warrant some kind of amendment for this.
Is there anyone else here? Go ahead and come on up, sign in. We're gonna start a timer, three minutes. No, no, you're good.
That was my fault.
My name is Jasper, and I live in one of the subdivisions, my house is, and the renderings as well, too. And like Mr. Bischner and everyone else, I've emailed or sent on Facebook. I'm very for this. My mom worked at the Kmart headquarters and my wife's a local veterinarian here and I'm a physician. And I have three little kids, and I think this would be wonderful to be able to walk there. And like, my, actually, my questions were about the farmer's market, possibly at some point. It's, it would be a nice communion space for everyone. And I know everything is not set yet, but having it really like a town square would be very nice for this area, between kind of, close to Birmingham, but not yet with that type of development here. Plus the economic impact. I know this commission doesn't talk about that, but I'm totally for this. And I appreciate like, just hearing from Mr. Forbes himself coming to this. Usually architects come and developers, so yeah, it looks great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who's here who would like to speak on this? All right. Seeing no one, we will turn it back to Planning Commission discussion. And if anyone has a resolution that they'd like to propose at this time, Mr. Fox.
Yeah, I would like to take a shot at proposing the resolution, please. So move Plan Unit Development, JPLN, or no, PUD 021, JPLN 2024-0012. Proposed Somerset West Concept Development Plan and Preliminary Development Plan for Phase 1A, North Side of Big Beaver, West Side of Coolidge, 3100 West Big Beaver, PIN 88-20-19-476-002, 88-20-19-476-003, and 88-20-19-430-004, Section 19, presently zoned PUD zoning district. Whereas, the applicant Forbes Frankel, Troy Ventures LLC, submitted a conceptual development plan application for a planning unit development located on the northwest corner of Big Beaver and Coolidge in Section 19, approximately 40 acres in area. And the applicant also submitted a preliminary development plan application for Phase 1A of the proposed Plan Unit Development, including internal roads and utilities. And the concept development plan proposes multiple phases for a mixed-use development, including up to 500,000 square feet of office, up to 300,000 square feet of retail, up to 750 residential units, and up to 250 hotel rooms and open space public amenities. And the concept development plan contemplates the development of up to 17 acres of the site by University of Michigan Health, a constitutional corporation per the Michigan Constitution. And whereas the concept development plan will be implemented through submittal of preliminary development plans for each phase of development, and each preliminary development plan will require a Planning Commission public hearing and City Council public hearing prior to approval. And whereas the proposed concept development plan meets the standards for approval set forth in sections, in Section 11 dot 03, therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission recommends to City Council that concept development plan approval for the proposed Somerset West Plan Unit Development be granted, and that the Planning Commission recommend to City Council that preliminary development plan approval for Phase 1A of the Somerset West Plan Unit Development be granted. I don't know if there's a subject in following, so I'll just throw that out as the motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Mr. Faison, is there a second? Okay. Discussion.
I have a clarification that I'm seeking. I know the, the concept development plan is good for five years, we heard that. And the preliminary development plan is good for three years. At that point in time, the concept development plan's five years drops off, but the PDP stays for the next three years. Now, within the three years, if something were to change, let's say they don't get to build anything at all, what happens then? Do they come back in front of this body to seek another site plan approval? How does that work?
Well, initially, under the zoning ordinance, they're allowed to ask the zoning administrator for an extension. So that can be, that can be done administratively. But if there's gonna be substantial differences to the preliminary development plan that's been approved, then they would have to come back for approval. But in this case, we're, you're being asked, or City Council is being asked to approve their preliminary development plan for just the, just the infrastructure, which it sounds like they're shovel-ready. And I don't, I'm not sure that that really comes into play, the five years or the three years.
Okay. So this would be a later thing, as the site plan-
Each preliminary development plan has its own process for approval, and each one of those gets, gets three years.
I see. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion? Mr. Lambert.
Just a few comments based upon what we've heard from Mr. Forbes and the questions from the commission members, that I think that, looking at, and I appreciate Ms. Dufresne's comments about, of course, balancing flexibility and predictability, that usually in a lot of the cases with these plan unit developments, we've been honed in more on the side of predictability. In this case, I think we could need to give the applicant a little bit more flexibility based upon several factors. Number one, they removed the old Kmart building that had been sitting empty for 18 years or so. Number two, the fact that they're bringing the University of Michigan Hospital as an important anchor to that site. And third, the getting some new multi-use businesses and residential units on that property will be a nice supplement to Somerset Collection. And also to answer one of the questions about the neighbors to the north, is I think Mr. Forbes has heard the concerns expressed by the one resident. I think he has a vested interest in making sure his neighbors to the north are happy. And number two, with the people, either the businesses or with U of M Hospital or residents who might be living in that area, he has an interest in making sure that they have a nice view and a nice exterior to the north so that everyone is accommodated there. So I think we should move on with his resolution and put it in the hands of City Council.
Are you calling for the vote, Mr. Lambert?
Oh, no, no, I'd like to let other people speak.
Does anyone else have anything else? All right. We're ready for the vote, Ms. Arnicki.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Beekner.
Yes.
Ms. Malala Hawley.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Faison.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Krent.
Yes.
Ms. Parakis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for coming in. And thank you. Good luck with City Council. All right. Let's move on to item six, conditional rezoning. It is a public hearing. The conditional rezoning application is JP CR 2025-002. Proposed Northland Enclave, West Side of Corporate, North of Long Lake, address is 5455 Corporate, PIN 88-20-8-451-4, Section 8 from zero, sorry, from O Office Zoning District to CB Community Business and MF Multi-Family Zoning Districts. We are going to have Mr. Carlisle present.
Yes, thank you. This unfortunately is a little bit longer presentation, a little more detail on this one. Site in question is located on the west side of Corporate Drive, just north of Long Lake. Current site is Zone O Office. It's a little over eight acres in area. And currently, the site exists as a underutilized office space. Proposal tonight before you is both a conditional rezoning of, from O to CB Community Business as well as multifamily, as well as a site plan which includes retail in the front half and then residential units behind. The conditional rezoning, the boundaries are indicated in front of you. Again, the whole site is currently zoned O. The applicant proposes to rezone the front portion, which is that pink portion, to CB, which is Community Business, and rezone the back portion, that's that green portion, to MF, which is multifamily residential. With regards to zoning, as many of us are aware, North Troy is kind of the eclectic mix, both from a zoning perspective as well as a land use perspective. And in fact, the Planning Commission and our mashup plan really calls for us to study this area in further depth, to, to really address some of the zoning and land use inconsistencies in the area. But with this site in particular, it's outlined in red, there's a wide range of zoning districts that surround the area. It's from O, RC, CB, R1, OM, EP, RT. So everything from single-family residential all the way to multifamily residential to commercial, all is with the, with the adjacent or immediate area within the, within the site. Similar for uses, there's a whole eclectic mix of a variety of uses within the area, office, residential, commercial, et cetera. We do note that there is also a MF zoning that is just to the west of this site, it's that dotted kind of brown spot. So there's, there's a continuation of multifamily really within proximity to this particular area. With regards to the mashup plan, I quickly noted that it is located in North Troy Special Area Plan. One of the key components of the plan, especially in light of the current economic and market conditions, is really promoting retail and residential infill with property repurposing. Obviously, we have a number of office uses in that area. The office market, as we all discussed, is tough right now. We've seen a lot of repurposing on Big Beaver, and I think we're gonna start seeing more in repurposing, especially in this area. So the plan really does promote that, and a variety of housing options would provide residents with access to work, school, and day-to-day needs in that particular area. And furthermore, the plan goes on to say that low to medium-scale attached and multifamily housing does really provide an appropriate transition between some of the more intense office uses, which are located a little further east of this site, and the less intense single-family neighborhoods, which are located a little farther west of the site. So really, the proposed, multifamily being proposed really is a good transition land use buffer between those two uses. We do also, the mashup plan also does note that rezonings in these transitional areas, which this is a, this is a transitional area, as a mixed-use would enable property owners to repurpose some of the existing buildings and office and repurpose sites in that area. And we do find that removing an underperforming office building and repurposing it for residential and commercial use really would fit, fit the overall intent of what we're trying to achieve in North Troy. The applicant has offered a number of conditions to their, to their application. I'm not gonna go over all of these, but I will know that they are all- I'm not going to go over all of these, but I will note that they are all consistent with the site plan that we did review. So with regards to site plan itself, as we note, the retail is located in the front of the site. It includes five separate units separated right now. Again, obviously, when they come in with future tenants, those may be consolidated, but right now they're showing five separate tenants in those spaces. There are ten residential units on site, residential buildings on site. Those total eighty-two units. The back ones are three-story tall, those two back ones in the back, and the ones interior to the site are two stories. We do note there is also an internal sidewalk system in around the entire complex that does also connect to the existing sidewalk on Corporate Drive. Access to the site is one one point of ingress off of Corporate Drive, it's the northeast corner. Once you pull in, you have the option to go left into the the rest of the retail portion of the development, or you can go straight into the residential portion. The retail portion has a one-way circulation system around the building and to get through that drive-through. The residential has a two-way system throughout the the development. We do note that all the bulk standards are compliant. It also has been reviewed by the fire department, and they have not raised any concerns with regards to access and circulation. Parking is compliant. There are one hundred and ninety-six residential spaces total, one hundred and sixty-four of those spaces are in garages. That's the the two-per-unit requirement, and we also do note there are thirty-two surface spaces. Those are guest parking spaces. The retail provides twenty-four retail spaces. Those are consistent with general retail square footages. We do note that the applicant is deficient with one stacking space on the drive-through. They did submit revised plans yesterday. We have not had a chance to review them, but they do note that they have brought that stacking into compliance, providing that extra one space. All the requirements for landscaping have been met, including greenbelt, parking lot trees, screening, overall site landscaping. We did note in our in our previous review that we've asked the applicant to provide screen around the residential air conditioning units. Again, they said they have resubmitted a plan that addresses those concerns again, but we have not seen it, or we have not looked into it in detail. We do note that all the lighting fixtures are compliant. They include six pole lights and one hundred and sixty-four wall-mounted lights. One of the things we did stress for was a reduction in the lighting levels within that kind of that area circled in red between the residential and the retail. Again, they have resubmitted plans that they do note addresses that concern with lighting levels. With regards to floor plan, it's the retail building is fifty-eight hundred square feet, one story. They have five units within there. The units can be assessed both from the front and from the rear, and each unit right now has one restroom in the rear of each space. We do note these are concept floor plans, so they may evolve when they actually get future tenants in there. We do also know there's a drive-through unit located on the south side of the building, and stacking kind of goes around the rear of the building. With regards to residential, there's total seventy-seven thousand square feet, again, eighty-two units within ten buildings. Each unit is either two or three bedrooms, includes three restrooms each, and each unit does have a garage and balcony. The retail elevations are in front of you. It's one story, twenty-seven feet in height. The top is the elevation that fronts onto Corporate Drive. The rear is the elevation that fronts the rear parking and drive-through area as well as the residential portion. Materials include a mixture of bricks, stucco, stone, glass, et cetera, and the colors are a black and a dark grays. Residential samples in front of you. The top one is a two-story design, more interior to the site, and the bottom one is the front elevation of the three-story design. The two-story is twenty-five feet, the three-story is thirty-two feet, and again, a mix of bricks, siding, fascia board. And again, the colors are black, brown, and grays. This is a color rendering of the site. Corporate Drive is here in the front. So this is the retail building. You pull into this location here, either go left to go around the retail building, or you go straight into the residential. Again, two-story interior, three-story here on the rear. These are detailed 3D renderings of architecture. Just around the planning commission, there are five standards that the planning commission should consider with regards to rezoning. They're in front of you for your consideration, and there are three standards that the planning commission should consider with regards to the site plan. So overall, we do support the conditional rezoning and the site plan as proposed. We we do note that as it gets approval, we recommend the following items to be addressed by the applicant: increasing the stacking space by one space, provide screen around the exterior air conditioning units, reduce the lighting levels between the retail and residential, and provide a colored rendering of the side and rear garage elevations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. I think Mr. Savadon mentioned there might be a video that we are going to see.
There's like a tree up somewhere.
All right, here we go. One sec. Bear with me, it's one of these two-screen deals.
Thank you. That was pretty impressive. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for our planning department? Mr. Lambert.
Yeah, Mr. Carlisle, when I was, I'm sure most of us probably did, drove the site, I note I came in off of actually a different entrance to the south. Is there some kind of a cross-access agreement that they can use that south entrance that already exists? Because it's not on the the site plan, so although it does show an entrance at the far west side that looks like an access point. We'll wait for Mr. Savadon to bring the right, whoops, wrong one.
Wrong project.
Starts on page one thirty-one. One thirty-one is the beginning of this item. Oh, you you inserted this.
Inserted it. It's twenty-five pages long, so one thirty or one fifty.
Yeah, some fast math. Oh, geez.
Math was never my strong suit.
There, there, yep.
Go back to the area. Just go to the area. So, yeah, if you can see, Mr. Lambert, there's there are actually, the site's interconnected multiple ways now, and in the site plan, which, can you get to the overall site plan? There are continuations, there's the site plan continues to interaction towards the rear of the site. My understanding is there is a easement already in place, but we'll make sure we'll ensure that moving forward, ensure there's interconnectivity. So for example.
Right there, yep.
So there's a there's a access here, the rear access, there's actually a shared drive here that kind of runs up in here and runs back to other office buildings. There's also a cross-access here at this location, so that so this this would remain as shared access to the site back here as well.
Great, thank you.
While we're talking about that, I guess, I I have a question about the circulation. If if someone were to exit from the south side and they went, yeah, and they went east or west, aren't they entering a parking lot? There's no drive, right?
It's not a drive, it's a drive into a parking lot in this location with the office building somewhere back in here, but this is a drive to get down that to those back. This is a drive, right? It's very faint, doesn't show up here, but there's a drive that goes right through here to get to this site and to the back parking lot of this office building here.
Which then goes to.
You can get to Northfield.
Right, it's Northfield, so it's Corporate then Northfield.
They're all they're all connected with interconnected drives and parking lots, essentially.
Okay. All right, anyone else have any questions for the planning department before we call the applicant up? Okay, is where's the applicant? Yep, go ahead and come on up.
Good evening, area Nicola, URE Development.
Good evening, Jim Butler, PEA Group.
Thank you for having us here tonight. We have some printouts of the four points that we were not able to turn in on time, the four points were called by the the planning department. I'd like to share them with you so I can walk you through those four points in case there's questions.
Okay, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, these are not up to scale. This is only for reference, but the scale plans have been updated and turned in as of yesterday to the planning department. Well, good evening again. It's our pleasure of being here tonight with this exciting project. We, as as was previously mentioned, this is a very challenging site with its current use as an office. We were approached not too long ago from the landlords of the facility. It was almost empty, challenging with the office space, and they could not keep it going anymore. It was a business case, was not there, twenty percent occupancy. Our organization took it over, and we started thinking, what could it be? You know, we looked at office space, obviously, the the office space future is more into the consolidating all the office space into more of an A class or B class. This building is C class at best as of today, has deteriorated over the years. So that was not something that we look at. Then we looked at repurposing the building. Well, as you you all know, there's been a couple examples recently that the city has approved to repurpose office building, office space. We looked at that as well, and we said, okay, well, it's doable, we could do it, yeah? That's easier to do it, just repurpose it and provide housing. Then we said, does that fulfill the mission? What is the mission? The mission is to provide economically attainable starter homes for the community. If you repurpose this building as it is today, it will be very likely a A-for-rent product that will not give the opportunity to homeownership to the Gen Zs or whoever wants to come into the community and establish a family. So we said, okay, well, that does not fit the mission. We have to see how we can repurpose the site a bit more work-intensive, that would fit the area, would fit the use case, the adjacent properties on the east side of Corporate as well. And this is the plan that has evolved as part of our discussions with the planning department, our organization, the community around us. We came up with this plan as we believe that it fits the future of North Troy Office Park. Now, I want to address one point on the the question that was raised on the access points. When this site was developed approximately forty years ago, nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-seven, it was developed as part of three buildings, Timberland, one, two, and three, and they were all developed under a joint access agreement. So all those roads that go through this parcel to the other parcels, there are through an access easement. So that's not an issue for access easement whatsoever. With that said, any questions?
Mr. Fox.
Yeah, I must say, it was pretty fun going through the application and just seeing complies, 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 comply, because there are a lot of applications who do not comply with nearly as much of the ordinance as you guys have gone out of your way to comply with. There were four things the planning office pointed out. I can tell you took that very personally and obviously addressed it as quickly as you could, and I appreciate that. I guess the only question I have for you guys is what kind of timelines are you looking at for, let's just say, you know, gets recommended approval tonight, city council makes the decision to approve the rezoning? Where are you guys at?
So so we we have already scheduled, we have contractors scheduled for demolition of the building end of summer. We have two tenants that, actually, two tenants are moving out in July, the last two tenants. We had one, but one of them extended for two more months. And then end of summer, we're demolished in the building, and construction will start as soon as we get final engineering plans. And and the reason why I say that is because we do have, in the community, we do have a project that's almost sold out, and we do have demands from people, please, we we need more of this housing. You know, specifically, a mixture of the two-story with the three-story at a lower price point, and this is what we're offering here with this product. You know, there are there are units that that these Gen Zs are able or should be able to afford, based on our research and what we see.
What is that price point?
So they're going to start at upper three hundreds, which is, as I said, in in the city of Troy, you're not going to find new construction, single home residential for that price. And we have done our tariffs have thrown us a curve ball in a sense that, well, is it going to be sustainable? Can we meet our, and and we have worked diligently with our supply base to ensure that the numbers are not going to move for the time being, so.
Ms. Malala Hawley.
It's it's nice. Thank you very much for the video. That kind of gives us a good spatial imaging of the of the project. I have, when I looked at all the pictures, this is the only one that kind of stuck me a little bit more, and that is, it looks very plain. I don't know whether this is the actual vision or this is just a concept that you have, but this is going to be facing Corporate Drive, correct?
May I may I show a landscape plan so I can walk you through what it's going to look like?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Can you please go to the landscape plan in color? The idea, if I may, I think I understand where you're coming from, is the front of it. Why is it it looks so plain? So the idea of that retail is to be as close to the curb and to the sidewalk, city sidewalk, as possible. We have twelve feet, and that twelve feet is designed for an outdoor patio, as you can see here. So it doesn't do any good because that grass continues, but actually, right next to that 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 sidewalk, we have five foot and we go to the curb to the road. Actually, you don't have all that green space. You see what I'm saying? It's it kind of gives you the illusion that it's all this green space that we're, but if you go to the landscape plan, the top view, we can we can see it easier, I think. I think you have it in one of the, yeah, it's, I think you showed it. Yeah, the rendering throws you off, but we're at the limits with our, yeah, if you scroll Yeah, so so if you see this, you can zoom in and you can see that we're right at the at the at the city sidewalk, and we have created this this patio area, twelve feet of of seating outside that we could, yeah, right there, yeah, so thank you. So basically, this area right here, okay? So there isn't any more room for us to add any more greenery unless we take away the outdoor patio and seating for the, you know, the the neighbors or the people or the tenants and whatnot. So that was the that was, so push the building, because it gives you more of the neighborhood feel, push the building closer to the there, yeah, so, thank you. So basically, this area right here, okay? So there isn't any more room for us to add any more greenery unless we take away the outdoor patio and seating for the, you know, the neighbors or the people or the tenants and whatnot. So that was the, so push the building because it gives you more of the neighborhood feel, push the building closer to the road, create this patio seating area outside, and then provide that walkability with the rest of the neighborhood through the sidewalks.
Can you soften the space a little bit by maybe having some kind of flower boxes? Be nice planters, something that will bring in the outside green?
There's another top view that's got colors, and I think that shows the actual, if you don't mind, I saw it on... Yes, yes. It was in your presentation, I saw it on Ben's presentation. It's in the packet, but I was trying to, because the colors kind of give you the idea of what we're trying to do there. But to your point, if we can put flower beds, of course, we'll put them in there. That's, because you have to have that appeal, right?
Yeah.
So if I may, I can show you this. This is part of the packet, by the way.
Thank you. If I may ask another question?
Go ahead.
I know you mentioned in your presentation, because when I saw the homes, they're nice, they are pretty, I'm not going to say that they are not. However, are you familiar with that apartment complex that's behind the MGR Cinema?
Yes, yes.
So how I am looking at this project is, why not have a little bit more modern touch? I'm not saying exactly the same, similar to, maybe have some apartments, maybe have some single-family homes, something that is more modern. This looks, it looks nice, but is that the modernness that you want to create here?
So we, it's a very good question, very good point. We, this is our research of what we see from our clients. So we have a lot of, as I said, we have a community, communities that are being built and sold in the area. We have people that come and say, well, I like this, but I don't like this, I like that, I don't like... So we try to get that, we call it market feedback, and we incorporate it in these drawings that you see. And we can't satisfy everybody, and everybody's got their own taste and flavor, but we try to satisfy most of them with the colors, the elements that we incorporate, and the materials that we use. Now, referring to the project in question, I like that project. You know, we've done something similar in a different community, but it's more of an apartment project where you can stack the design and be more uniform. There's elements that have been incorporated of the same type of facade into this one, but it has different colors. And maybe that project, it gives you a different view or different feel because the coloring is different. This, from a material standpoint, is very similar to that product, to that product that you're referring to. Materials on the outside.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Tagle?
Sure. Couple of questions, if I could. Do you expect to have any restaurants in this unit up front?
So, very good question, thank you. We do not expect to have a restaurant, but we do expect, we've been contacted by a, we call it a frozen health food chain that would like to, it's out of state, they want to expand this area, and that's why they may take over the corner. And the outdoor seating and the drive-through is something they'd like to see. That's what they do in Florida, per se. It's more of a healthy eating yogurt, that kind of stuff.
The reason I was asking was that, the way the building is laid out, you really have two front facades. You have a street facade and you have the back, although there's parking back there, and I want to talk about that in a minute. But, so if you have a restaurant that's taking out stuff from the kitchen, usually that, after a while, that becomes a trail of grime and grease and all of that. And I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen here. And maybe speak to that? I mean, what if someone in the restaurant business, you know, fast food, come in and want to do something?
So first of all, it's a good question. We have not designed this to be a restaurant-type of establishment. The way it's laid out, I totally agree with you. We have designed this more towards a drive-through, small, maybe a coffee health store that you would have to drive through, pick up a coffee or pick up a yogurt or something like that. Nothing more extensive. The way we have partitioned this site, the way we have calculated the parking, we have not done any extensive research for, to fit a restaurant in there with that parking that we have designed. You know, for a restaurant to go in there, the parking ratio is different. And we can't comply. So that's what we're coming from with this.
As long as you can assure us that you're not going to have a restaurant...
That's not, yeah, that's not the intent, absolutely it's not the intent.
The other question is about, and again, it's a difficult problem to solve, but we've had this issue before where you've got parking, people crossing a drive aisle and crossing a stacking lane. And it just, unfortunately, it could prove itself to be an dangerous situation. Have you considered any traffic calming devices back there?
So we had a discussion with our team as it pertains to circulation here with that traffic mix, and we looked across the street. Red Robin, the Conny Island, there's a strip center there, and there's two office buildings, yeah? And there's a lot of walking. And also, across from corporate, a lot of office people would go for lunch. We have sat there numerous days to see how they cross corporate drive, not within.
They run across.
Run across, yeah.
So we are proponents of putting some speed, like a speed bump, for example, but is that going to do something to people that are running across from corporate? It's not. Here, for example, we looked at the circulation within. And the way we have designed it is in a way in such that whoever goes to the restaurant side, they make a quick turn and go in there instead of, you know, having, interfering with pedestrian traffic within residential site. That's how we designed it, with that thought.
Do you have any crosswalks?
Absolutely.
From the residential? If I wanted to walk up and get a smoothie or buy whatever?
Yes, yes, yes. If I can zoom in, so it's, so if... You see this here?
I do.
So it comes here, there's connection here, comes here, comes here, goes here. And same thing, there's here, 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 I'm shaking now because I can't, this, comes right over here. But there's two points that the people from the neighborhood can cross into the retail side. In areas that visibly you can see people crosswalking, they're not hidden, per se, in your blind eye, and they're crossing through. So the idea was that I did not want to have any crosswalks here where they're jumping to the parking spots and going through it.
What have you done to prevent people from crossing through that landscape area?
So, there's extensive screening here. As you can see, there's very extensive screening of arborvitus, evergreens, and there's a nice boulder retaining landscape wall right here. So there are barriers that, I mean, if they, they're not going to go through it, obviously. That's how we've managed it. And there's elevation changes, so you know, from this point here to this point here, there's a three, around three-foot elevation drop. And that kind of also gives you, it's not as easy to go and just jump.
I'm not so concerned with the adults, I'm more concerned with kids, but...
Kids, that's the idea, right?
Yeah, but again, I would ask you to consider some type of traffic calming between your parking, the drive aisle, and the stacking lanes. Because I think, you know, that's, to me, that's just a potential accident waiting to happen.
Just so I understand, this, this here?
No, 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 to the right. So you have that one...
This right here?
Nope, the one-way drive behind the building?
Oh, I see, here.
Behind the building, west of the building.
West of the building, right here.
Where the diagonal parking is. People getting out of the diagonal parking, going in and having to cross the people in the drive-in.
Okay. We have to talk, speed bumps are not allowed, are they? Because we work in...
It's probably not the answer, there's other solutions that would work better than speed bumps.
Okay. We're open, we can incorporate something, we'll work with them to incorporate something that will make sense. Yes, thank you.
While we're talking about the circulation, let me ask a question. This image actually doesn't match the 3D rendering that we saw. There was another image where we, where they zoomed in, actually, let me see, I don't think it's in here. But the parking spots, so you have that one-way aisle, just north of that, there's people who are going to be pulling in. And when they go to leave, if they want to, if they decide they want to go through the drive-through, they have to turn their car 180 degrees. There was a different rendering where they were actually parked this way, and that was, instead of the green space being on the east, the parking spot was on the east. You know what I'm saying?
Try to follow.
Anyway, the way it's shown here, I do feel that there's a circulation issue. It makes me nervous because people come in, they make a quick left into there, and they can park to the right, they can come around and they can park. But then, there's people who are going to be coming in and going to do the drive-through or go to the other buildings. And then you've got people who are backing out, you know, backing out while people are trying to come in.
So it's only one-way circulation? You can get in from the side to the retail and come out? You cannot, I mean, that's how it's designed. Only, you can come out only if you park in those six parking spots right next to the entrance.
Yeah.
So those are the only parking spots in question. And the rest of them, once you commit to going through it, you're going through the one way and coming out.
Well, once you commit to those angled parking spots, but there's the handicap parking on the north end, and then there's the three spots to the north that are also, to me, you're not committed to leaving to the south, you can go back and go to the north. Has that been reviewed by our circulation experts?
Just our engineering department looked at this. Let me go to 101.
You're on dynamic zoom. Do you want to be on dynamic zoom?
I want to move it. There you go.
There you go.
I think the question, Ms. Rags, you're asking is, there's seven spaces here, there's three spaces up here, it's kind of hard to see. The concern you have is someone pulls in, pulls in these spaces, they could not go through the drive-throughs point, they would have to back out, go out this way, and then go out.
Yeah, or they have to do a 180-degree turn to exit the other way.
Obviously, if you park in these seven spaces, you could back out, come around, and go through. This has been reviewed by engineering, they did not raise any concerns about circulation when they reviewed it. It's something that we can go back and circle back with them to ensure that they take a second look at it.
Okay.
But they didn't raise any concerns.
Now that we're looking at it, that car to the far, to the east, oh, sorry, my gosh, to the west, they can't back out this way, they have to back out this way, which then basically means they do have to leave on the south side of the property.
Or they could pull directly to the south and go this way.
Oh, I see, just back up straight, back out that way.
Or back into those spots.
Right, right, okay, all right, all right. That's fine, there's a bunch of options, I suppose.
It's hard to read, I apologize.
I drove over there and the site is gorgeous. I mean, it is a beautiful site, very green, it's like a forest back there. I think I heard you say that you're going to keep that retaining wall with the rocks because of the two elevations, and I hope that's correct.
Yes.
Because that's beautiful.
So what we're doing is that all those, if I may, all those boulders are being saved to be used on all that retaining wall that we'll have along that side of retail. And we also are saving the majority of those trees on the south, if you can, south, east corner, if you can move this just a little higher. So we created a trail, this is all the, we're saving all this corner here. So the existing building is right here, right here, we're saving all this, and we're creating a trail, natural trail that goes inside those trees, that vegetation. So we're saving almost an acre.
Can you show me again where the existing building lands on that?
Approximately, approximately, it's right here, it ends right here.
Interesting.
Yeah, right here.
How far up does it go?
It goes up to somewhere at this point here.
Right.
Okay.
Somewhere here, somewhere here to somewhere here.
So when I drove over there, all of this along the road, this winding road that you take to the south of the property, it's all lined with beautiful trees.
We're not touching, so this is also part of our parcel, all these trees are staying. All these trees here are staying.
What about on the north end?
So the north end is only one row of trees, that we're all replacing them. So if you look at the landscape plan here, I mean, it's in the handout, we're replacing, so we're cutting probably 10 trees or 10 or 12, whatever the, on the north side, we're replacing all those.
Okay.
But there's not that many, they sit on top of a parking lot berm, if you noticed, and those are all being replaced. But the south trees that are a lot more, that are adjacent to the building to the south, those are all staying.
Okay, okay. I noticed, okay, so there's, so from this view, it's unclear to me whether there's a courtyard between the four buildings.
Yes, so this is all green.
Because you've got the buildings green, and then what I would see as the green grass is white, is that correct?
So if you look at the page, it's easier in your handout, second page in your handout.
There it is, okay.
You will see exactly what we're doing there. This is all a courtyard. Then what we have incorporated is, at the start, we have an area that's got outdoor seating, it's a good quarter of an acre with the nice water feature. And then to the north of it, we have a small playground area for children. And we're going to have a drawing wall as well, because our kids in our neighborhoods, they want to draw all over the place, so we're putting a wall as well.
So you are committed, when we saw the fountain in the image that is happening?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Because we do have a similar fountain to another community around here, so they love it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Me.
Mr. Kret.
Thanks. So looking at the housing itself, I notice there's no, like, front porch, something to sit out and talk to your neighbors across the courtyards. It feels like, you know, you've got a door and that's it. You open the door and you're eh, right in the sidewalk. It's like, there's nothing there to make that community engagement with your neighbors.
The front porches are, we have front porches in all of them. And I can tell you that, I can tell you that the communities that we build are very similar product to, as I said, I keep referencing. There's a strong sense of community, starting with their kids. We have a community of 48 units a quarter mile away from here. There's at least 15 kids every afternoon after school with their parents, that are walking those sidewalks between the buildings and going to the center playground area. And they're all communicating, they're going from, so there's that community feel, even with this layout, actually, this layout is more than if you had more spacing, because you get to talk to the neighbor, you get to see that neighbor.
Yeah, but let's say mom wants to watch her kids play, doesn't want to, you know, wants to oversee what's happening in the yard, she wants to sit out. That's all I'm saying, there's a nice porch, an overhang in the shade, watch the kids play, make sure the two-year-old is not, you know, getting himself hurt falling down, or, you know, or if they do, the mom can rush out, and, you know, that kind of, a little bit more of adult places to sit.
So we do have, if you saw, that we do have the awnings that cover the porch, and also we do have a wider access kind of walkway into the units, they're five foot wide. And this is where we see people that if they want to sit and watch, even a dog on a leash, that's where they sit in our communities. They have a covered awning, if you look at one of the renders, you'll see it.
I'm trying to find one that shows like the porches and the awnings.
It's on the, if you keep going...
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah, so, and this is...
There's no place for a chair.
Yeah, there, I mean, in there...
Put it on the grass.
They can, we have a five-foot, so that's a five-foot wide walk.
Yeah.
And in there, we've seen at least one or two chairs that people, if they want to sit, they sit outside lawn chairs.
Yeah, but, okay. I just, I just was hoping for more of a, you know, sit down with your mate or whatever, and, you know, chat out in front yard, look at the courtyard, have a drink, you know, I'm just looking, there's nothing, nowhere to be, you know, it's just like, not unless they put the chairs on the lawn, I guess.
So what we've seen is, this is a community type that we're trying to, what we try to build is a sense of community. We have seating in our common area, and in our communities, the majority of people that go uncongrat, go in those seating areas. And they sit out there and they have a drink and they communicate, and that's how the communities have been designed.
So where are they going to, okay, I... So where, where are they going to, okay, I've got this, this view right here.
Yes.
So they bring out their lawn chairs.
Yes.
Mom and pop, and they're going to watch the, not even their kids, some other kids playing in the front yard. Where do they put their folding chairs?
They put them right, so that's, the sidewalk walkway usually is a three-foot walkway, the sidewalk. We have it at five foot wide. A five-foot wide walkway, you can fit a chair or two chairs on the side, and you can sit right there in front of your door and you can watch your kids play.
Bit, bit, bit tight to me.
We can make them six foot wide. If you believe a six foot, we can make them six foot wide.
Accommodate more of a, you know, place to come out of your house and enjoy the yard in front, that's all I'm saying. It would be nice to, to create that welcoming, open, you know, something, someplace to sit up, set out your chairs and enjoy the, you have a beautiful courtyard, you know.
Are you imagining more of a hard surface, or more of a, it can be a malt surface slash grassy area?
Well, someplace you can set a chair on, it doesn't tip over, so it's got to be a hard surface.
We would create a bit more hard surfaces, okay?
Not a lot.
No, that's why I said, if, if we could widen, we're all for widening that walkway into, from five to six to seven even, it, it can fit, it will achieve the mission of having additional space for seating.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be the full length of the side, I mean, it's, what's the width of that, eight feet, 10 feet?
Yeah, that's around those, eight feet, 10 feet. Yeah, we can do the first five feet.
A section of it bigger, because you may invite your neighbor to come over and chat, you know, have a drink or something. I just want a little more friendliness out front, that's all.
We, we can incorporate that, that's an easy incorporation, yes.
All right, the other, the last thought I had was, didn't you do the development on Butterfield?
Yes, yes.
Is that yours, the court something, what is it called?
It's called Center Court.
Center Court, yes, okay. So, that type of architecture is stunning, it looks great, I was, at the onset, I thought, oh, next to the, you know, the...
The Regent's.
The Regent's, he was like, oh, this is not going to fit, but you know, it looks great. And I love the materials, I've driven by it almost every other day, and I would like to, because this, you know, all the surrounding buildings are more modern than this, I'm just thinking, boy, if you could do something like that, and it still had the variation that this has in color and, and, you know, anyway.
Very good point, and we, we have gotten a lot of praise from the community about that, that, that development. As I mentioned, that product, we had to come up with all those features to blend into with the neighbors, right? If you remember that, that discussion from a few years ago. And as such, those units came out much nicer, but they were not as economically attainable from the starter home perspective.
Okay.
And we have to find the sweet balance to where we want to be with this, you know, so that's where we come from.
That's fine, I mean, this is not ugly, but here's what I'm seeing, so many of these style row houses in Troy, and they're, they're all located like on a circuit board for a motherboard on a computer, you know, they're all just, all stacked and neatly put in rows, but here's the thing, what'll happen is, if you go through, and you know architecture, you go down in Detroit and you'll see, oh, these were the specific style of home, bungalows everywhere, they're all look the same, one after another. I haven't seen bungalows like that, other than maybe a few in Royal Oak and a few in Birmingham, they're the same era, 1950s, 40s, and then you go to the, the craft style, you know, that's in like, a little bit deeper into Detroit, maybe five mile, six mile road, they have that, you know, the big porch and the columns and all, and this is, people look back at this and say, oh yeah, that was done in the 19, the 2020s, we know that. And I'm just worrying about dating this thing architecturally, and creating, again, that modern, that modern thing doesn't, doesn't seem to age a lot, to me, at least my eye. I know, the other thing was, well, we're not going to get into other architects, but for homes, but I'm just, I'm just, the only thing I'm concerned about is that this is, this is an era, and I realize your market says, oh yeah, I've seen these, I like them, I want to move in, but it's, to me, it's not necessarily a timeless design unless you incorporate something in there to make it, I don't know, happier? You know, it just, I don't, I'm just throwing that out, I know I don't have an answer for you, I'm not going to design your place, but...
We, I think as we evolve as a society with different trends and materials, of course, we have an evolution in materials on this space, on this industry. We will find those endless time pieces that we can incorporate from a design perspective. Here, though, it's more of a, how do we balance the design with the economical feasibility, with et cetera and et cetera and et cetera, we need to achieve all these points, so we try to negotiate between all of those, but to your point, I think we, we were in a discussion for a different community a few months ago, and your point was well, very well taken, was saying, you know, I don't want to see these things lined up, and we did incorporate some, some phasing of the, of the units, just to make sure that, we, we took your feedback into consideration from that meeting from some months ago on a different project. Well, our team thoughtfully thought of it and said, how do we make this so then it's not a straight line? We break it a little bit, we do offsetting on the units, and that's what we tried to incorporate, to the extent that we're allowed, from the site footprint standpoint, so then we don't, you know, so then we go outside of that.
Yeah, I always go back to this one area in Troy called the enclave, where they have winding roads, and they, they have multifamily homes, and you walk through that and you feel like you're in a beautiful neighborhood, not, and I'm not going to call this a barracks, but it's, it's, it's approaching that, because you do have some nice architectural features, but these are just, you know, these are just so in a row, I'd just like to see, the setting, you know, the timber woods or timber land or whatever it was called back then, you know, it's just gorgeous. I mean, that was a, actually, I've been here for 47 years, of all the office areas I've ever been in, and I realize there's an issue with rent there, but it's not worth saving, but, boy, I just, I love the woods part, and to have that kept in that spot with some winding roads and curve the, the homes a bit, you know, I'm, that would be my solution. I realize it would probably boost these from the high 300s, approaching 400, maybe what, five or six hundred?
They go north of five, and then at that point, you're not, you're not, you're not serving that demographic, that you need to sustain the community.
I get it, no, I get it.
And I'm with you, I want to make, we have different product categories, like you said, Center Court or Butterfield. It's a better-looking product, because we had to come up with that product, but then you're phasing out certain demographics.
Yeah.
That I think you, they need to be part of this community if you want to sustain Troy the next 30, 40 years, you have to account for them.
Okay, I'm just throwing out thoughts, that's all, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Krantz said in terms of, you know, the windy roads and also emulating the surrounding office area with a more modern look, but I hear what you're saying about, you know, if you're, if you're going to tell me you have to raise the price to $500,000 a unit, that, then we're not interested, because I do appreciate the fact that this is targeting a, a sort of more of a younger person and a, and a starter home type, which is a huge need in Troy. I do wish that it didn't, it wasn't all lined up like Lego pieces and, you know, I wish that it looked more like your retail building in terms of the design and have it match that. Speaking of the retail building really quick, if you look at the, this page, Mr. Tagle mentioned that, you know, it's really two fronts, and, and I agree with that, in the sense that we need the, the front-end corporate drive to look good, but most people are going to be entering from the rear, and the rear just doesn't look very good. I would like, this is one of those examples for me, where I'd like for the rear elevation to have a little bit more, that'll look nicer for the people, the majority of people entering, because that's the side they're going to be entering on in terms of the windows and the, the, the architecture really, to have it be a double-sided building.
Well, we, we can incorporate the same or similar facade to the rear as well, and I think if that's what, we thought of, we thought of that, and we said, okay, well, you have the parking spots, the parking lot, then you have this screen, this landscape screening and, and boulder wall that kind of, kind of disrupts the viewpoint from the residential side to the back of the building. But we can, we can incorporate that as well, if that's something that you would like to see or the commission would like to see, we can put that as saying that, change the elevation the same as the front, incorporate in the back, and this is easy for us to do. We can do that, no, no problem.
I didn't see that the, the rock retaining wall or the arborvitie that you said was going to be there.
It's in the landscape plan, so if you look at the...
Second page.
Second page?
This page.
Oh, those are arborvitie, okay.
Yeah.
It doesn't show the, the elevation change, but because I drove there, I know it's there.
Yeah, it, it is.
And it's going to basically, and there, and there were some nice stairs up, and you're going to leave that.
So, yeah, so what we're going to do is, all that stuff is going to come out temporarily, then we're going to have to build it back up, once we clean up the site. But all the boulders are being saved.
Okay. I mean, I personally would recommend that those stairs that are there, and if they hit right in the middle, I would create a pedestrian walk, so, so people don't have to go like this to get to the building, because to me, you're building, you're bringing people in to live, and you'd like them to utilize that, and you'd like them to be able to access that area, and I think it'd be fine to put a crosswalk right in the middle with steps down.
So right here, you're saying?
Yeah.
Somewhere here or somewhere here?
Right in the middle, right in the middle.
So right in the middle. We can do that as well, and the reason why, as I said, I mentioned at the beginning, we didn't incorporate that, we thought of doing it there, is because then you have to go through the parking spots here, then we have to create another sidewalk to come somewhere and connect to it. So maybe we can put it right here, if, if that's the case, and we can connect to, to this point here, if that's okay with you, then.
I could say.
You come with this one.
You'd lose a parking spot, right?
No, we would, we would be able to accommodate a crosswalk there, at this, at this junction here.
They satisfy the, the parking lot tree requirement within the parking lot on that location, or can they put like a little?
They, they satisfy it, as of the plan now, they satisfy, depends on how they rework it.
I see, okay.
Whether or not they comply or not, but they satisfy it now.
Okay, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
One quick question, a clarification.
Yep.
This is a conditional rezoning, so all we can do is make suggestions, but the applicant is the one they have to...
Yeah, they have to offer it, yep.
Offer it, so.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Yeah. Mr. Fox, do you have something?
Well, I was going to ask for a clarification along lines of Mr. Lambert, but, actually, I'll hold that for deliberation, thank you.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead, Ms. Malahali.
Thank you. On page 188 of our packet, where you have all the place structure that you show, and by the way, thank you for incorporating that into the design, that's a good, good thing. It says owner to approve, what does that mean?
Oh, okay, so very good question, so that, that's, those are templates that PEA, our engineering firm, provides to us.
Okay.
And they left that note in there, but we approved since we incorporated in the plans.
Because I wasn't sure that this was approved.
No, they, they have templates, they, they transfer to the plans, that's, that note should have not been there, but it's carried over.
Okay.
So it's...
And if I may, I know this is a conditional rezoning, but just as a suggestion or just as a thought, this whole area that you have, the proposed playground slash open door area, seating area, can that be located to the center between the four buildings? Is that something that you have, that has a design, is that something that you've thought about?
So, so we, we could have, we can incorporate that player in, in there as well, but the idea was, when you enter the residential area, you have a centerpiece, you have more of a community feeling. If I have to get in between two building rows to find my center point, then I'm going too far into the development. You want it to be seen by anybody that drives in, that this is my water feature, this is my playground, and then you have additional courtyard that, once you enter back into the, between the buildings. That was the idea behind it, but yeah, you could do that as well.
So in that courtyard area, that, that nice grassy man area you have, what is, what is the, what, what is the distance between?
It's around 50 feet.
50 feet.
55, I think, is it 50, 55?
55 by 130.
So, to Commissioner Krantz's point, can there be any benches that you can put where senior citizens or anybody visiting can just sit and enjoy the weather?
We can add benches at no problem, we can add, add maybe a dozen of benches or more, it's not an issue whatsoever. What we run into a problem with benches is that, is that they cannot be, they need maintenance, if you don't maintain them, so once after, you know, you know what I mean? So, so the more you have, then kids play with them, so you want to have them strategically placed where they're not all over the place.
Yes, yes.
So, but yeah, we can add benches, we can put that as a condition to add more benches in that area, yes.
Privacy element, too, we don't want too many benches where it becomes like a lounging place, right?
Yes.
We also want to maintain some amount of that, but, sorry, Commissioner Krantz had a nice, correct point, if there were to be some people who just want to enjoy the weather, put their lawn chairs out, at least incorporating some benches would allow them to kind of sit and have that community feel, engage with neighbors.
So if, if, if there's a motion tonight to recommend approval to move to the next phase, we can put that as a condition into saying that we're going to create porch, porches at seven foot wide by seven foot deep in front of each porch we've agreed, so they can sit, and add additional benches into the center court.
That would be...
We can add that, we can voluntarily add that, yes.
That would be, since you have the 55 feet space there, yep.
Absolutely.
This image right here?
Yes.
What is going on here?
Oh, that's, so that is, that is an access point to the, you talking about this, this point right here?
Yes.
So that's, so remember I mentioned this access cross easement between all these buildings?
Yep.
So they do have a, a deck...
Ground parking.
It's, it's a loading deck for their utilities, and they need access, so they're going to access R through R drive to go there. It's maybe a truck, a dumpster truck a week and loading in and out, so basically that's it.
I mean, through the north side of your property?
Yes.
But, no one's leaving that way from your property?
No, no, no.
Okay, so there'll be signage that they're not...
There'll be signage, yeah, there'll be signage, speed, speed limit, yeah.
That people aren't going to think they're going to go out that way.
Yeah, so the parking of this building to the west is, on the other side, access to the road to the south. You see them, so the access to this, this office's parking here is to this road to the south.
Yeah, right, yeah, correct, yeah, okay.
So we're trying, our, our, our design has tried to maintain the existing cross access easement points. We've played with the existing footprint, and that's why we were kind of constrained, what can we do? We're not touching some of the trees, we're not touching some of the roads, what can we fit in? There's a lot of constraints there.
What's the reason for all the parking on the north side?
Oh, that is to comply, we have guest parking minimum or maximum allowed, so that's access parking for guests of, of the, of the residents.
Okay.
And we have put in the minimal, or the maximum, minimum and maximum allowed number of parking spots.
But if, if you're visiting someone on the south side, you have to walk over?
Well, yeah, I mean, we couldn't fit them all over, and, you know, honestly, honestly, there's so much parking on the offices, it's hard surface empty, that they're not going to have an issue parking anywhere in that area. You, you've driven by, I hope you've seen it. There's a lot of hard surfaces.
Mr. Fox?
I guess I wanted to give the applicant a chance, as it was stated, you know, you have to suggest conditions that you're comfortable, and I know a couple of them have been said verbally. I've written down the seven foot wide, the front walkways, and I've got benches added to the property. Were there any others that I missed?
No, as far as, as far as I know, I think, I, we can...
Oh, I know what we talked about, was, I don't know what, what other commissioners, if you guys agree, and obviously they have to offer it, but they did offer it, is the, what do you think, Mr. Tagle, the, the two sides?
The facade, yes.
The facade to, to match a little bit like the front?
We will, we will support that as well, as an additional point.
You would offer that, right?
Yes, we would offer that, and for city council, we'll have the renders to reflect that as well.
Okay, okay. This is a public hearing, so if we, we can always ask them back up, but I'd like to get to that, does anyone have any pressing questions?
I do.
Yes.
So, um, Madam Chair, I have not seen a conditional rezoning agreement. I did bump into Mr. Nushai, uh, who has represented Mr. Nicola previously, he indicated he would be drafting that conditional rezoning agreement, but I'm looking at what you submitted, Mr. Nicolat, to, um, Mr. Savadon, on January 15th, and your, the conditions, your voluntary conditions, there are 10 of them that you've outlined in your letter, but you're also seeking site plan approval, so are you also voluntarily offering to tie the site plan that you're seeking approval to as a, as a condition?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, that's not clear, so I just, I just wanna make sure.
Yes.
That's what we're doing here tonight?
Yes, yes.
I mean, we're just recommending, but they're looking for, um, the conditional rezoning, it wasn't that clear. So they were also doing a site plan approval?
That was just voluntarily offered by the applicant.
Oh, just now?
On the record.
Oh.
Yes.
Well, 'cause we were talking about a site plan, but nothing, and nothing in the condition, the letter that was submitted on January 15th is tying the voluntary conditions to, to the site plan, so I just wanna make sure that that's.
And I apologize, we must have missed it, but that's the intent of a conditional rezoned site plan recommendation to City Council for approval. That was the idea.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you.
So that means then, this is it, this is the site plan, and what, and then we have sent it, it gets approved, and then it's been done. Okay, Mr. Beekner?
The northwest corner where you said the trucks come in, that looks like a tough turn. How do they get there, what size trucks, a 53 footer is never gonna fit, there's a 24 footer?
No, it's only a dumpster truck, it's only a dumpster truck, yeah, the only dumpster.
So they come in on that north side, they make a left-hand turn, they make a back turn, and then they back?
Yep, that's how we designed it, so they can come in.
Kind of work?
Yes.
Looks tight to me.
We, we ran the simulation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Tagel?
Ms. Parakis had asked, she saw in a, one of the renderings, the parking, just as you turn in off of your entry drive, going towards the retail, the rendering I'm looking at shows the three spots running in an east-west direction, as opposed to the site plan showing them in a orientation of a north-south direction.
You found it, what page are we on?
Well, I found it on this.
No, so the rendering, the bird's eye view you're referring to? It's the second page, is, is this rendering, the top?
Okay, see this rendering?
Yeah, that's the top, okay, yeah, so that, that's, that's, um, an outdated, um, it's only to show the site, but the parking lots are.
The question I have is, why did you change it? What went wrong with this layout? I mean, it's three spots, it just seems to me it's a little easier to manipulate it to maneuver.
Yep, here it is. It's this one right here, guys, this was the one, this was what I was trying to find earlier.
You mean this, this here, right, this page?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks easier.
To me, it's a, it's a better divide between where the one-way starts.
Yep.
Just seems safer.
So, so.
The second glass.
So if I may, uh, there's a, there was a, there was a, a review that was done by the, uh, the planning department of the supporting cast, that, uh, we were required to show the mechanical unit for the retail, and as such, we had to include, we had to add the ACs and the screening, the landscape screening, to the north of the retail building, and as such, that pushed over that parking, and Mr. Butler here had to reconfigure that site right there to comply with the turn.
Here's where all the screened equipment is, air conditioning units and transformers. There's a hedge that goes around it and screens it in this area, so the parking spaces were previously here, we took them and rotated them over here.
This was the.
You really wanna put those air conditioners right, right there, by, where a lot of your people are gonna be walking by? Have you ever considered putting them up on the roof? And I know you have a pitched roof, but it's, it can be done?
We, we, uh, from a circulation standpoint, um, we try to screen it, we try to think of the roof standpoint, if we can put them up on roof. They're not big AC units, they're smaller, they only made us push the parking lot by five or six feet. If that's, if that's something that this body would like to see, then I guess we can cooperate that as well.
Well, to me, it's a better circulation plan, I mean, I, and I suggest, thought that probably you guys thought it was, 'cause that's what you first presented, or at least in this diagram, that's what you first presented.
We had, we had missed them, on that diagram that you saw.
The what?
We had misplaced in the mechanical units showing them in the site plan.
Didn't have a home for them.
We did not have a home at that point, that's when we added them, that's what happened.
Yeah.
We did not have them on the rooftop, if it was a flat roof, then it would make sense.
I had thought that that was the handicap parking.
Part of it, not, not the, not the three that you're seeing, but the three that are up against the building, uh, just to the north of the building are the handicapped.
Yeah, here's the handicap park. So there's a walkway here, and there's this mechanical area.
Oh, that's the mechanical?
Yep, there's a hedge that's all the way around this, so there's a concrete sidewalk that takes you into the front door here. So here's the mechanical area, and here's the ramping for the handicap.
I, I guess I'm not understanding why, um, why that precludes you from doing the parking the way this is. What difference does it make?
Because once we included the mechanical area there, you kind of pushed.
Once we pushed this out.
North.
Putting the spaces here, we can't make this, give us the distance geometrically.
I mean, even if you push the, uh, push the green, I mean, you have a, a pretty big green space, if you pushed, if you just widened the entrance and pushed everything back.
I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
That curve right there, I think.
'Cause if we put spaces here, this tightens up this area, and you get the maneuvering to work, and that area is challenging. We'd lose a parking space.
And there is no sidewalk there either, correct?
There's a sidewalk right here.
I didn't throw it out, I'm not doing it.
So people could walk up onto the sidewalk to the front door.
Are there any crosswalks behind, uh, from the, from the angled parking area to the retail?
Not right now.
No, there is not.
No crosswalks there? Wouldn't that be?
The, the walk pattern will, will be from here, going onto the sidewalk, and entering the building.
And then on the south side as well, you have an access point, crosswalk to go through the neighborhood.
Yeah, we.
And come, go through the trail, nature trail, come across and go in there.
Here, and then from here, you can come here, down the sidewalk, into the front. We didn't want people crossing through.
Yeah, so the parking.
Parking lot, across drive aisles, and into the store, so we wanted to kind of segregate them.
Mr. Fox?
Um, I, I know it's super, super important that we go through, but I just wanna make sure there's not anybody from the public who's here, who's been waiting to comment on this, just, I know we might have continued questions, and we can bring them back, but I think maybe we.
Yep. We tried to go there, yep.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. If anyone's here to, um, speak about this development, please come up to the podium now. Okay, doesn't look like anyone's here, um, so we'll close the public hearing. Um, let, does anyone want to propose a resolution, and then we can start discussion? Mr. Fox?
I would like to propose a resolution. Conditional rezoning application JP CR 2025-002, proposed Northland Enclave West Side Corporate North of Long Lake 5455 Corporate Drive, P I N 88-20-08-451-004, Section 8 Form O, zoning district to C B Community Business and M F Multifamily Zoning Districts, resolve that the Planning Commission hereby recommends to the City Council that the O to C B and M F conditional rezoning request, as per Section 16.04 of the City of Troy zoning ordinance, located on the west side of Corporate North of Long Lake 5455 Corporate, P I N 88-20-08-451-004, within Section 8 being approximately 8.22 acres in size, be granted, uh, for the following reasons. The request complies with the master plan, the rezoning would permit greater flexibility in use and development of the property, the conditions offered by the applicant reasonably protect the adjacent properties, the rezoning would be compatible with surrounding zoning and land use, the site can be adequately served with municipal water and sewer. Be it further resolved that the Planning Commission recommends the following site plan design considerations, um, which I know some of these have already been readressed by the resubmitted plans, but I'm just gonna read them for the sake of the record. Increase stacking by one space, provide screening around exterior air conditioning units, reduce lighting levels to 0.1-foot candles along retail boundaries adjacent to residential, provide color renderings of side and rear garage elevations, as well as, uh, redesign the walk-ups to the doors to be seven foot wide, uh, include additional park benches on the property for public seating, redesign the facade on the rear of the commercial building, uh, to mimic aspects from the front of the commercial building, um, and include a conditional rezoning plan, uh, that sets the site plan as a condition of the rezoning to the satisfaction of the city's attorney.
Do we have a second? Mr. Beekner? Ms. Ufrain, did you want to weigh in, or are you fine?
Um, the resolution is fine, I, I, I never liked the language to the satisfaction of the city attorney, and this is a voluntary conditional rezoning agreement, um, so, but I, but it's fine.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Beekner?
Just, it's a great reuse, I like the green spaces, the path hasn't been mentioned much, uh, I think the play areas are cool, uh, the missing middle, uh, this, this, this works for me, I like it.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I think, um, one of the important things to highlight with this property is just, I, I think the affordability is a huge aspect for me here personally. Uh, for reference, I bought my house, uh, a couple of years ago, it was 22 years old, and it was 340,000. So the fact that these are new builds in Troy, in Troy schools for, starting at 350,000, that to me screams like, this is attainable, we, you know, younger folks can do this, so I, I really like this build.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, um, I guess we're ready for the vote. Ms. Parakis? Yes. Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Ms. Malala-Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to our next item on the agenda, which is a special use application, S U J P L N 2024-0031, proposed barbat Troy vehicle fueling multi-use station southeast corner of Crooks Road and South Boulevard, 1981 South Boulevard, P I N 88-20-4-100-59, Section 4 currently zoned neighborhood node U District. And I believe Mr. Carlisle will be presenting.
Yes, thank you, um, this is the second time this application's been in front of the Planning Commission. The applicant submits, um, a, uh, site plan for the corner of Crooks Road and South Boulevard, proposing a vehicle fueling, um, inconvenience store with a carryout restaurant. The subject site is zoned in neighborhood node, um, and it's in the form-based district, and it qualifies as Site Type A. Uh, as a node, the automotive use requires a special use approval. Then regards to site layout, the building is at the hard corner of South and Crooks. The canopy is behind the building, uh, along Crooks. The applicant's provided 51 parking spaces, they're delaying behind the main building under the gas canopy at the south end of the site, as well as there's a covered patio, dining area located on the west side of the building adjacent to Crooks as well. Planning Commission considered this at the February 25th meeting, uh, the item was postponed to address the following issues. One, address gateway signs the applicant agrees to incorporate in the development. Uh, the site plan does show a location of a proposed gateway sign, uh, at the corner of South, uh, and Crooks. However, they note that the actual design, um, they would wanna work with city staff to incorporate a general design for the whole city, so, um, they're not proposing a sign design at this point, but simply the area to put that sign. Indicate the turning radius for various delivery trucks, they have included that on Sheet C 3, which includes fueling truck movements, and that has been reviewed by the Engineering Department. Uh, ensure the canopy material matches the design of the main building, and provide a good illustration. We do note that they have provided a canopy elevation, uh, they are wrapping the base or the columns with the brick that would match the building. There is a runway or a canopy face, um, that they're proposing, they've not proposed details of what that will look like. They do note that they wanna include signage on that to match the fueling station, um, whoever the fueling station user is gonna be. We did ask if they would eliminate the, the signs and graphics, and simply go with a, uh, design of brick or metal to match the building. They note that, um, that they are not willing to do at this point, that braying on the canopy is part of the, uh, gas station requirements, um, but we have asked applicant to provide a 3D model of the canopy in the building in context of the surrounding site, to see how that would look. Well, the, uh, items that we spent a lot of time discussing at the last meeting was the elevations, particularly the, those on the, uh, the north side, which is South Boulevard, as well as the, the, uh, west, the Crooks Road frontages. Um, they have added additional transparency and architectural details to both the South Boulevard elevation and the Crooks Road elevation, uh, and they have added additional shrubs and landscaping along both to soften the look. So the north, uh, sorry, the, the north, the top elevation at the top is the parking lot elevation, and the one right below is the South Boulevard elevation, so they have added a little bit of architectural details, but really, still there's that flat wall against the South Boulevard elevation. Uh, the Crooks elevation, this is where the outdoor seating area is gonna be, and the carryout restaurants can be located, and then this is the side elevation, um, that would probably have the least visibility of all the elevation sides. Number five, provide some type of screen between Crooks Road and the dining patio area. They have added shrubs, ornamental, and deciduous trees between the dining patio area and the Crooks Road. Indicate the locations of the future EV charging stations, um, they've indicated that they're gonna provide a total of 16 of these charging spaces, which include eight of the fast charging stations they will install at this point. Provide additional details of the decorative light features, they have, add that to the fixture cut sheets, and acknowledgement that the fueling center and the restaurant will be constructed and opened at the same time. They did acknowledge that verbally at the last meeting, but we do ask that they confirm that on the actual site plan itself, uh, moving forward. There are, again, three standards the Planning Commission should consider with regard to the design. There are seven standards the Planning Commission should consider with regards to special use. With that, we are asking the Planning Commission to consider the special use and site design standards, and if the Planning Commission does grant special use approval, uh, we recommend the following additions. One, consider eliminating the sign or graphics on the canopy face, and rather have the face be a metal or brick to match the building. Acknowledging the plans that the fueling center and restaurant will be constructed at the same time, uh, constructed and opened at the same time, and last, you provide a 3D model of the canopy and building in context of the surrounding site. Thank you.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions for the planning department? Yeah, Mr. Tagel?
I'm looking on, in our packet on, uh, page 230, and it's showing the, uh, turning route, the radiuses and, and paths for the fuel truck. And I've noticed it's crossing over the property line to the west, to the east. Is that something, I, I mean, I've never seen that, uh, as, as a, uh, an acceptable thing, I, obviously, you haven't done.
That's a shared driveway, a shared easement.
But what's that, is that a property line or not?
It's a property line, but that's a shared easement, this is a shared driveway between the two par- to the two, the two properties. So there's a shared, if you show the aerial. You can see, Mr. Tagel, um, it's hard to see here, 'cause this is, but there's a shared, this is a shared driveway that runs the entire length of the building, that will remain in, remain, it will be open, the building will be located in this particular location, um, and this gets you access back to these back ones, so this is a shared, common, uh, driveway, uh, so they're, they're extending over the property line, but they're not extending into any sort of buildings or right into a drive aisle.
And Engineering has looked at this geometry, this turning geometry, and they think that works?
They did, they did look at it, and they have not commented that it does not work.
I'm sorry, I think it's a dream.
Excuse me?
I think it's a dream. I mean, that truck is gonna go all over those curbs and those aisles to get into position to line up to, to, you know, hook up to your fuel tanks.
That's a really tight turn.
We can certainly run this by them again, they, they did look at it initially.
I mean, I, I don't know what, what the options are, but it just seems to me that it's not, that, that really isn't realistic as how that truck is actually gonna have to come in and leave.
Just a reminder, the project engineer's sitting in the audience, so if you have questions, he's here.
Oh, oh, project engineer.
The project engineer.
Which is the city.
The guy who designed it.
Um, before we invite the applicant up, is, does anyone else have any questions for our planning department? And I, I've, I'm, done a good job of calling you guys planning department tonight. Um, all right, then let's invite the applicant up at this time, and, uh, maybe we can ask some questions.
Hello, everyone, John Abrow, uh, again, with Design, the, uh, project architect, as well as, uh, Eric from Stonefield, civil engineer on the project. You wanna, you wanna discuss the, the, uh, do you have the site plan with the turning radius?
Yeah, it's on page, uh, 230.
230, yeah.
Of the PDF. There we go.
Yeah, so, uh, understanding, you know, the current concerns that you are speaking to, um, I, I think similar to what the previous applicants indicated, you know, this is a truck turning template, it's used across, it's an industry standard essentially, um, so what was models of 50-foot truck maneuvering through the property? The driveways are wider, the drive aisles are wider than what the minimum is required within the city, so I think sometimes you'll see these, and it, it wouldn't work in that manner. Um, we do have additional room for maneuvering, um, should they need it. Uh, the other piece is, as Mr. Savadon alluded to, this cross-axis drive is typically how we refer to it. It exists today between the closed rite aid and the existing restaurants to the east. existing restaurants to the east. Both Rite Aid and those restaurants utilized it in a similar manner of getting trucks on and off the site for deliveries. So we are very comfortable with the maneuvering. The barbats who are developing this also deliver the fuel themselves. So their group has reviewed it and are comfortable with those maneuvers that are being shown. You know, the other piece is if the city engineer does have great concern with it, we'll happily work with them in addressing it. I think we have more than enough room between the drive aisle and the fuel canopy if things do need to shift, you know, a couple feet in either direction. We're more than willing to work with them and talk through whatever scenarios they want us to look at. But again, that's what was asked at the last meeting, and we felt that this was more than acceptable.
Yep, Mr. Tagle.
So where the fuel truck is stationed, it's going to be parked while he's fueling. That aisle width from, let's say, the east end of the canopy over to the adjacent curb line, how wide is that? At 24 feet?
Yeah, 24 feet. And so I think from pump face to curb island, it'll be a total of 34 feet. So realistically, if they're dropping fuel, you're not going to be able to, or you're not going to want to fuel your vehicle in those two easternmost positions. But again, they can control the time of day that fuel is delivered. Obviously, they have staff on site if they do need to go and cone those two spaces off or those two fueling positions off for a 30-minute span to ensure that the truck is able to access the site and maneuver. That's one of those operational features that would be pointless.
How long is the truck there, putting in its 40,000 gallons or whatever it carries?
About an hour.
About an hour?
Hour.
Can I ask staff, is it okay to park in a driveline for an hour? I mean, from my understanding, the loading zone should not impede parking or drive aisle access. Now again, if this is something that was reviewed and is acceptable, or I've missed this in the ordinance, I'd-
I mean, Mr. Tagle, if I could, this wouldn't necessarily block any vehicular maneuverability. You'd be able to move, obviously, east-west to the north and south, and then north-south just directly to the east. So I don't really think they're blocking anything. You can kind of see that dashed X-out box there. That's the fit, I think it's a 10 or 12 by 50-foot loading space that's required by code. And again, it's a 50-foot tanker. So yes, that particular drive is blocked, but none of the parking spaces would be restricted. And then there's obviously four means of ingress and egress kind of going in each direction around it. So I don't think we're truly blocking anything other than just the two pump positions during that, you know, that one-hour time period.
So we have a lot of gas stations, a lot of gas stations in Troy, and we revised our minimum site standard area for gas stations about 20-some years ago because you recognize that we had a lot of small sites. So just anecdotally, I'm not a civil engineer, but anecdotally, this setup is dramatically better than most existing gas stations in the city by a long shot. And where I take, you know, I have a comfort level, I can't state it enough, I'm not a civil engineer, but where I have comfort level is the organization, the barbats control the delivery of the fuel trucks. So they control what time of day. They control, you know, how they access the site, how they park, you know, they'll know what time they're coming, so they can cone off to Mr. Eric's point, Mr. Williams' point. They can cone off the area to control the, you know, access to the pumps, et cetera, et cetera. So in terms of the necessary evil of fuel delivery, how many times a week are we talking, Mr. Barbat?
About six times a month.
Six times a month.
Maybe four.
So I, as a non-civil engineer, I'm okay with this.
Thank you, Mr. Non-Civil Engineer.
Ms. Malala-Hali?
Thank you. The parking space including one handicap spot that is right near the entrance/exit location, is that something that is, I mean, I'm just looking at how close it is to the entrance where the people are coming into the gas station. Would that be a problem? Because if somebody were to get out of there, they have to back, and then we are talking about the oncoming traffic stopping because somebody is trying to get off that parking lot and out of your, out of this area.
Sure, yeah. No, I mean, I think it's a fair concern. But what we do have is, I think it's right around 65 feet from the time they enter the site are able to slow down coming off of South Boulevard to make a decision if they want to go ahead and make, I guess it would be an eastbound or left turn when they enter, or if they're going to continue down into the gas station convenience store area. You know, they have the option to go ahead and do that. But again, they've got about 65 feet, and that's from property line to parking space. So realistically, if you look at the driveway approach too, that's probably another 30 feet. So they've got almost 90 feet to really slow down, assess what's happening, and should somebody be reversing out, they should have more than enough time to slow down and stop to allow that to-
90 feet, is that what you said?
Yeah, I think it's about, I don't have an exact dimension, but I think plus or minus 90 feet. Just looking at the rows of parking to the right, probably about 25-foot drive aisle, 20-foot parking space, and then the driveway approach itself.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, so over the two times that this project has been in front of us, we have gotten some significant resident feedback overwhelmingly of the consensus that there's too many gas stations already in this corner, there's too many gas stations in that area in general. And I can't say I don't agree with them. I mean, there are a lot of gas stations right there. So I guess, what is it about your build, I guess, that's different? What would you say in response to that comment, I guess?
So I think what you had heard from Scott last time, who unfortunately wasn't able to make it, is looking at the directional traffic of people going northbound and southbound along this roadway. I believe, obviously, we have Kroger to the west. I believe the only other gas station is at the northwest corner of the intersection. So really, what those are serving is southbound traffic, right? If, typically, if you're accessing a gas station, you're going to go ahead and do it in the same direction that you're traveling. So I think when the barbats looked at this site, they saw a gap, and I'm apologizing, I don't remember the exact miles in between sites. I want to say it was four miles to the nearest station going northbound. So again, they looked at this as an opportunity to serve northbound traffic. And again, this is a different product than what you see at Kroger, what you see across the street. This will have the restaurant inside of the space. I know it was a condition in terms of phasing of construction. The intent is to open the convenience store and restaurant at the same time. We'll happily add that to a plan sheet. So again, this is bringing more than just the fuel use, right? That is ancillary to the convenience store and to the restaurant that will be within the space along with the outdoor. So I think it's really an improvement upon your older synoco's and kind of the kiosk-style gas station, right? Where all you can really get is a pop, a pack of cigarettes or something like that. This will have additional convenience items that aren't necessarily available at all stations.
Thank you. I think that it was the 15-mile intersection at Crooks. So this is 20 miles. So it's five miles that there's no gas station on the east side. You know, but I'm glad you brought up the fact that we did have many people send in comments, and we do read them, and we do appreciate them. But I do remember the first time you came because I was much more reluctant when you originally came. But after hearing the presentation, hearing that argument about the gas on the east side, and also just the idea that it's, you know, they don't even want to be called a gas station. It's a, I think you call yourselves a fueling station and a convenience store, and there's a restaurant. And so it's bringing much more to the community than just a gas station. That's my opinion. And just the whole layout and the way it looks, and the EV station, the EV spots are also a bonus. I wanted to ask a couple of questions, though, about, one of the big concerns and the big things that we talked about last time you were here was the fact, excuse me, that the south elevation looked like the front. Sorry, I know, I mean, the southern, not the South Boulevard. Gets a little complicated. So the south, southern elevation is sort of the front. And so if you pull up, if you could, yeah, you did it. Thank you. Page 244. Yep, okay. So if you look at your design changes, it was an improvement. But I'm wondering whether, to me, that brick wall smack dab in the middle is still, looks to me like a back. And I understand it's the cooler there, so you can't really put windows. But some ideas I had were, given that this is the front, or it should be considered a front because it's the first thing you see when you enter Troy, is to take that little door and make it a double door in the middle of that glass, and make that look more like a main entrance. And then maybe, and put a black canopy to match the other side that has the black canopies over the doors. And then the other idea would be to use some of that wood paneling where you say market and liquor, and add that to the brick. I mean, I don't want to tell you how to do your job, but something to break up that wood wall, maybe you add market with some wood, and then add the door. To me, that would go a long way in making this look like a front.
Okay. So double doors are used for function purposes. So if we're going to add double doors to the north side, we're just adding another door. It's, the two doors or slide doors are used because of the occupancy, the volume of people coming in. Now we're just adding components just to make it look like a fake facade in a sense. But regardless of the, you're looking at a rendered 2D elevation that I did not want to throw, again, we also miss the fact that there are going to be trees on long the main road. So this is not just going to be like a block wall there. You're going to have trees there. And to get to a point where if every single elevation's going to look exactly the same, it goes back to Mr. Tom's comment about the last presentation, which I happen to agree with him, a lot of buildings look very similar. But, you know, we did add a major component to the northwest corner of the building. Not only just added the lighter tan metal panel, but we added the red kind of wrapping around it. You know, we took pride in designing this building here. Again, I'm a designer, I hate having every single elevation the same. And the fact that we are actually putting some landscaping or there's some trees on that brick wall. So, you know, if I add some siding there or awnings, it's going to be hidden. And these are bloom trees that, you know, 10, 15 feet. And that whole, that entire block wall is not, is no more than 30 feet. The two trees that are proposed on this landscape plan are going to be hiding it.
The elevation on page 245 shows the tree, and it's one tree, and it's kind of not an evergreen tree.
Eric, do you know if we have two trees there between? I mean, I'm not sure exactly if there's place exact-
There's three trees along that front.
Okay, so this rendering is not accurate. I would have to look at the landscape plan to see the trees. Oh, I see. It's three trees, but not in front of the brick wall.
Yeah, the place we might need to shift a little bit based off the architectural changes.
Because the other trees are in front of the glass. There's two trees in front of the glass, and then-
One tree in front of-
One tree in front of the brick, and it's not an evergreen tree.
Yeah, I think we would have those trees to push up the block wall.
Okay.
Yeah, we definitely move those trees over in front of that wall, no problem. We could also center that door, if you like, as well.
I'd like to see the door centered.
Yeah, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Then the other question is, do you have to put the yellow stripe on the canopy?
Yes, that's a requirement by our brand. It has to be up, yes. But as you can see, the canopy has evolved over the years. It's more of a blade now. They used to be almost 40 inches tall, and now it's-
Three feet, 36. I mean, it's at max.
Yeah, and I think, actually, I think it was more like almost 50 inches tall. I know they have definitely reduced in size. So 30 inches to three feet is what we're showing here. And, you know, is, is there also a bull nose on that that comes out as well?
On the what?
On the canopy. There's a center feature in there also that kind of gives you an illusion that it's even, even more slimmer than it actually is. So it's definitely come a long way on those.
I mean, I'm going to ask this question at the risk of sounding like I don't know what I'm talking about. But like, what about, what about adding, I mean, does it, would it make sense to add a yellow accent onto your red trim on the building to tie it together? Or not? I don't know. It just, I don't, I don't know. It's just all of a sudden like the yellow in the back.
I mean, you would like to add yellow to the facade of the building?
I don't know.
I don't know.
We don't want the whole building to look like shell.
Yes, exactly. All right, that's fine.
We can change the red canopy, the red awnings to yellow, if you like. But I think that this is much more tasteful.
Yeah, yeah. You know what, maybe would, is the yellow strip also have red? Yeah, it does. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. All right.
Shell is red.
Shell has gold, yellow and red, yeah.
And looking at the facade right now, I think that we can do a great job of shifting the trees over in front of that wall, maybe doing some kind of nice columnar tree.
Holiday lighting would be nice.
What's that?
Holiday lighting would be nice.
Yeah, we could do that for sure. But I also think that we can maybe set some landscape light up on those trees and just make it, make it look really featured and really nice.
Okay.
We don't have an issue with that.
And then let me ask you, where's your bike rack?
Probably not on the rendering, but-
Yeah, it's, it's north of the ADA parking spot that Ms. Malala-Hali asked about. There's a larger concrete area there. It kind of shows up in the bottom right-hand rendering, just to the left of the tree. You can see that expansive concrete walk. There's two bike racks in that area.
So it's on the south of the building, the south side of the building?
East, south and east.
The southeast. So I guess, you know, we talked about the door. I'm big on hating doors that we don't really use. But I do see on, if you are familiar at all, with the corner of Crooks and Waddles where there's a 7-Eleven, a ton of people bike there, and there's bike racks on the corner. So it just, I actually think that you're going to get people using the entrance on South Boulevard, and I wouldn't mind seeing the bike rack over there.
I agree. Wait, I thought the bike racks right there, I guess, is it not right there?
It's not the south, it's actually right on the east end of the building. It's between right there, yeah.
So it's actually center?
Front door.
Probably go a little further down.
I guess I would bring it a little bit closer to south, so people on south, you know, then, then they can use your door. You'll get more people, and then maybe you'll think of putting a double door because of the volume.
We'll definitely work with planning and shift that over.
Okay.
For sure.
Okay.
There is a pretty wide range of the concrete pad, so we have to- Yeah.
Yeah.
The bikes are probably going to be on the sidewalk anyway, so it's probably a better spot.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I just do think that you're going to get people, I mean, I've had people say to me, the people who are in favor of this, tell me, oh, I can see my kids biking up to get a slice of pizza. So speaking of the pizza, when, I just want to confirm that it goes in writing that it's all going to be done at once.
Absolutely.
That is the intention.
We committed to that last time.
Okay.
That is, that is true. Typically, our plans that we've done for you before, that our plans are kind of incorporating both the interiors for both the tenant and as well as the C-store. But they're kind of confirming of exactly opening at the same time, and that's more your- Yeah, I mean, there could be a little lull there, but in this situation here, we've got the tenant secured. We know who it is. So their plans will go in the same time as ours. If they're general, if they decide to use a different general contractor, that might take a couple weeks after, that could be a possibility, but it's still going to look open. It's not going to be-
That's no problem.
Boarded up and under major construction.
I think somewhere in the packet it said for later, a later phase of development. So that was what I was worried about.
It's definitely not something for planned for the future. In a perfect world, we'd like them open at the same time. However, if there's a short, a really short, maybe a few-week gap where they're just training and waiting for health department approval, something like that, then it's going to look open. It's just, it might not be open on the same day.
Understood. Mr. Krent?
Where are the electric vehicle outlets? I didn't see any-
Yeah, they're, they're at the most visible location on the property, along Crooks Road. They outposition the gas, the fueling pumps.
Can you bring that drawing up so we can see that, where they're located? I don't see any EV.
Yeah, we talked about it last time. They're actually at the, there's like the little orange squares next to the parking, there we go.
Okay, those, okay, I get it. How many are there? Enough to how?
16.
16? Okay, 16 vehicles can park and charge.
Well, we talked about it last time. So the idea is up to 16, because we talked about the future growth and the capacity of it, somebody mentioned it last time. I think our original plan is right now- I think our original plan is right now is six or four.
We're starting with two, with, with four cars able to charge at the same time. Obviously, it's a revenue stream for us. So if, if the use builds up, we're going to have the infrastructure to be able to add more and that's where it would go.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tagel.
Where's the dumpster located? I couldn't find it.
South.
Can we get a pen?
I don't see it.
Frank, can we get a, um?
Hold the pointer. Yep, right here. The right top one. And where is it at, John?
Right to the southeast, yes, southeast.
Right there.
The green, the green cans.
Right there?
No, no.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, guys. Yep. All the way hidden in the back.
Hidden.
Okay, now I, I get it.
The employees are going to love going all the way there.
Yeah, no kidding.
What's that, what's that block in front of it?
That's a concrete pad.
Yeah.
Is there screening? It's hard to, it's hard for me to picture what's going on.
There's going to be doors in front of it that are going to be completely screening it when they're, where they're closed. The concrete pad's there so that the, the trash truck doesn't destroy the asphalt.
Okay, okay.
The site plan I'm looking at says it's existing trash enclosure to remain, so it's already, it's already there. And note, and I'm, that I'm looking at existing trash.
It's the same location, it's going to be improved, it's going to be bran, it's going to, it's going to get all new doors and.
Okay, I hope so, yeah.
Absolutely.
Just last comment, picking up on what you were saying, that I think you would agree that all four elevations of this building are very visible, even going westbound on, on South Boulevard, because the building adjacent to you sits so far back, you're going to see your east elevation really early on.
I, I agree. Of course, all four sides elevations.
Okay. And I'm not suggesting that all four sides have to mimic, but I think there are ways on these large blank walls, you know, and I get it, there's going to be landscaping in front of it, you know, but when the leaves come off of the trees, now all you've got is, is a big blank wall. I think there's ways to integrate some of the, some of the other materials you have. I'm not necessarily suggesting putting windows or whatever, but I think there's some ways to break up those large masses of masonry and articulate a little bit more on those, the east elevation and the north elevation.
So I think that the tree feature, the idea that I have that what I'm going to replace these with is a, it's a, it's a beautiful, beautiful tree, ornamental tree with the lighting. And then when the, when the leaves do fall off, they do leave a beautiful branch. I don't, we, we really like the wood feature and we just wanted, we wanted to make sure we tastefully did it.
Don't have a problem with the wood feature. All I'm saying is you need something else, in my opinion, you need something more to help that elevation. It's, it's just, it's that, that, and is that, is that the, the brick or is that the burnished block?
Oh, that's a burnished block.
Yeah. I think, you know, there are even ways to use that material. I mean, there are different textures. You can get split face block, you can get different height block, just to create some interest in that facade.
Sure. We've done it with, actually, we put a band of a different color. To your point, it can be burnished and split face on one piece.
Yeah. We could add a band, for sure.
Yeah, red band.
And I might even carry the band. Yellow?
Yellow.
No, what's, what's this material? Is this the same material? And what's over here? What's this?
The brick.
Okay, maybe we just, we incorporate the brick. Can we go back to the elevations?
Page 244 is the one where we see all four, there we go.
Yeah. So this brick that we use here, well, we can, we can create a band across here.
I mean, there's a lot of ways to do it. You know, there are different ways to do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Whether it's a band, whether it's a, you know, you, you take a material up to four or five feet and then another material on top of that, you know.
If you didn't notice.
Three beautiful trees here in the band, I think center of the door definitely is going to make that elevation pop, in my opinion.
Is, is that actually a metal product that you're referring to as wood? You're not using real wood, are you?
Uh, it's a composite.
Composite.
Okay, so it's not a wood. It's not.
It's not wood. It's maintenance free.
Yeah.
No such thing.
Yeah.
He knows.
Maybe surprised.
Are we, are we as a commission, well, well, okay, do we have any other questions for that? Go ahead, Ms. Malala-Hawley.
I just want to let you know, this is the first time that I am seeing where you have shown your images of how your project is going to look like on actual streets. That's a first for me. So it looks cool. And to Chair Perakis' point, that site view four northeast perspective, that if you, that really shows how blank that piece of wall also looks from the South Boulevard view. It's the next page. If, if we want to move to the next slide, that is, next page, slide, page. Yeah, oh, not that. This is for 246 in our packet.
Yeah.
46?
Yeah. Yeah, right there. A, I like, I like how you've placed your building as to how it will look on the actual street, so I do like that. And the fourth image there, site view four, it looks pretty plain on, from, taking a look at it from this angle.
This one here? You're talking about?
Yeah. Looks very plain.
Correct.
And it looks more like a warehouse setting. I mean, from this, this angle, looks like a warehouse because it's all.
That's, that's actually heading west.
Correct. It's site view four.
Site view four northeast perspective, South Boulevard view.
Is there planting in front of that?
There is. These images don't reflect, guys, it is, it is becoming very difficult to create a lot of these renderings, especially the buildings being so small. I mean, you can see how some of these properties are just kind of blocking off the, the building. But there are, we don't show the actual plantings of them. So there actually is, I believe.
We can, we can strategically locate the trees. We can, we can pretty much mimic what we're doing on the, the, the South Boulevard or the Crooks elevation, where we add that band and then we can put the, and we can set the trees there. So we can basically mimic it there and do the same thing. Put the three trees in front of there, put the landscape lighting on it, we can, and then we can do the same thing on the other side with the, the band to break it up.
Yeah. Yeah, because you're, you're taking that red band, just turning it into a concrete band.
And you'll center the door.
I personally doesn't, don't think it needs it. I like the plain wall better myself. I just think it looks more modern, it looks cleaner. There's a lot going, there, there's more going on, on this facade than we've ever done before. So personally, I don't think it needs it, but if it's something you'd like to see, then we don't have a problem doing it. I do think it starts to clutter it up a little bit. I think the plain wall with the trees in front of it, and again, these are very tall columnar style trees, the band's probably going to go away, but I, I personally think it doesn't need it, but we'll, we'll go ahead and agree to do it. I think John's done some really nice projects. We've done some really nice projects in the city also that I, that we're really proud of. Like we just completed a couple of years ago, the Sherman Williams Building on Big Beaver. I thought we did a really nice job there. We just finished a renovation at the former Pizza Hut. Now it's Firebird Tavern. I think that we did a really nice job over there. So we, we're really proud of our architecture. You know, we, I think we go above and beyond. There's a lot of developers out there that'll come in and just throw a bunch of block, half block, people think it's brick, it's not, it's just block and, and some dry, that's not what we're trying to do here. The metal, the composite, it's all very expensive material and, and also bringing the elevation out with the canopies. I think, I think, I think you'd be surprised, it's going to be, it's going to be very nice when it's done. But if you still want to see the band, we can definitely do that.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So as a planning commission, I think we, and maybe it's a question for the planning department, did you get a good feeling? I guess what I'm, where I'm going with it is, if we pass a resolution, that means we're not going to see it again. So are you guys comfortable with what we're looking for so when they come back, you can make sure that the changes that they told us about are going to happen and to our liking?
Let's go.
I don't know what's going to happen. I don't know how the vote's going to go.
He's not a qualified civil engineer.
Right. Okay, Mr. Fox.
Well, I guess to that point about the vote, you know, this is an auto-centric use on a major corridor in the city. I cannot help but think of El Car Wash, which we rejected. We had less residents come out in opposition to El Car Wash. Heck, we had some residents come in favor of El Car Wash. I don't see any difference between these two projects. Like, I do not see putting an auto-centric use in the middle of one of our neighborhood nodes at one of the major entrances to the city goes against most, if not all, of the conversations we have had about walkability, about what we want the neighborhood nodes to be. I just do not see myself ever voting in favor of putting an auto-centric use on one of these corners. And I, I think, at least just from what I'm seeing from the community, there's a lot of neighbors who also don't support it, so I am not, I'm not in favor of this project ultimately.
Okay. Would you like to respond to that?
Sure. Respectfully, I, I disagree completely with your comments, sir. The Car Wash offers one use, you wash your car. And over here, we offer several uses. This could be a family gathering place where you can come in and get ice cream, you can come and get pizza, you can come and get food, several offerings. I, I don't know who's coming out that's not in favor of it, but not too many people showed up today to oppose the project. So there could be competition in the area that is, you know, asking people to, to send in emails or make phone calls. It happens all the time. And, you know, the Car Wash use, it, it's one offering. You're going to wash your car, you're going to leave it to 100% automotive related. This is not 100% automotive related. So that's my answer.
Let, let me ask a quick question because it, it did make me think of one of the comments that came in, or maybe I saw it somewhere in the packet. But remind me, did we talk about the hours of operation of this, of this business? Someone made a comment that it was 24 hours and I don't ever remember agreeing to a 24 hour.
Scott mentioned early mornings to, I mean, late, late after, late, late evening. So was it 24 hours? No, I think Scott mentioned there was, there's always a point where the operation was six hours in between or four, six hours from a certain shift. You know what, I, so.
Or are gas stations always open 24 hours for gas?
On page 225 of our packet, it says hours of operation, fueling center, convenience store applicant prefers 24/7?
We prefer 24/7. We actually had a conversation with a couple of the local police officers in the city and Troy.
I do remember she was.
Very excited about the potential gas station use, 24-hour aspect, even the 7-Eleven's closed. Now it sounds like the late night police department has minimal options, Denny's, Kerry's, Leo's, all change their hours. Very excited that there's going to be activity there and it's not dark and it's inviting. Big lit up place that it would make it safe that, for the police officers and for other people that are working different hours, night hours, that they can have somewhere to use.
Okay.
And that's just feedback we got from talking to the police department.
And there was somebody, last time the audience said that, hey, I worked late and I.
It's fine.
I mean.
There's going to be more than one person here at all times.
Okay.
And it's, it's going to be safe, it's lit up, it's big, it's, I think it's going to be a great asset for the neighborhood.
Lit up, but not so lit up?
No, not so lit up, but lit up enough to feel safe when you're there pumping gas. It's going to be lit up inside the, the property, especially with the new technology, the lighting, where it just shines down and it, it keeps everything from leaking out.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Me, I'm good.
One more, one more question. So the restaurant stays open till 10 or 11, but the convenience store portion will stay open 24/7?
Exactly.
The fueling station will also close at 10?
The fueling station and the convenience store will be open 24/7 is our preference.
There'll still be food options.
There will be grab and go options. Soroki's Pizza does a nice job of leaving a, a open-faced cooler with all their options in there that you can microwave, eat cold, whatever you want to.
So that way the cops who are coming in the middle of the night have a place to sit and hang out.
Sit, hang out and eat.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
It will be making a lot of offerings to the police department, the fire department, paramedics, all for free. There's, there's a list that they, we, we offer to all of them to make sure that they're always taken care of.
Thank you.
We need them.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think you can go ahead and take a seat. Does somebody even want to propose a resolution for our discussion? Yep, Mr. Lambert.
And before somebody seconds it, make sure I got everything you want in there. We resolved that special use approval and preliminary site plan approval for the proposed Barbet Troy Vehicle Fueling slash Multi-Use Station at the southeast corner of Crooks and South Boulevard, the address being 1981 South Boulevard. Section four currently zoned NN Neighborhood, no district be granted, subject to the following condition, fueling center and restaurant to be constructed and open concurrently and design features to the building to be approved by planning staff.
Per comments, per planning commission comments during the meeting.
Yes, I'll accept those words.
And, and can we make sure the bike rack is located?
Including the bike rack relocation on the site.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion.
I was just going to say, inspecting the site and seeing that Rite Aid store in the condition it is right now, this is a much better use of the site. And viewing the fact that there's a, gas stations on the other two corners, it's not our job to control whether there's competition there. Competition is always good. It's a matter of what's in the best interest of the community at that location.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. And also, it was, the, the businesses to the east were also happy about this development, so that's a positive as well. Mr. Faizan, did you raise your hand or Mr. Hudson?
It's me.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry?
Well, second is motion.
Okay. I think it was already seconded, but
Already did that.
I think we're good.
I'm third.
Okay.
He beat you. Did you have anything else to say, or Mr., or Ms. Malala-Hawley, did you want to say something?
Um, to, uh, Commissioner Fox's, uh, point, I do, I do sometimes feel, yes, auto-centric is not something that we need to go with. However, the car wash that was approved on Long Lake and, um, Liverny was one of those that I was not in favor of, but this one I am in favor of because of the fact that it's a multi-use station. You know, it, it has auto-centric, uh, features, isn't it? But it's also multi-use as opposed to just that car wash that got approved right in the middle of the neighborhood. So, um, I, I will be voting yes on this, and I think I like what they have come back with, with all those renditions, and the fact that they are also willing to take in some more of our comments and suggestions today. Uh, gets my approval.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I think we're ready for the vote. Mr. Kran?
Yes.
Ms. Perakis? Yes. Mr. Fox?
No.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Is that a yes, Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Beegner?
Yes.
Ms. Malala-Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Um, I'm going to open it up for public comment for items on the agenda. Is anyone here? Thank you for coming in. Um, if anyone's here for, um, items on the agenda. Okay. So we're going to move on to planning commission comment, and I'm going to start with Mr. Fox.
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Beegner?
We had talked about the next meeting is the day after Memorial Day. Are we still going to meet?
I know there's
It's a go.
It's a go? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
I'd like to make a little observation on some, some of the activities at the commission tonight. We had, and I hope we don't bruise any feelings on this, we had a conditional rezoning before us. We've done so many site plans, I think everybody forgets that it's a little different procedure, and we spent a half hour trying to rebuild, design, and construct a project that was irrelevant. It was a conditional rezoning. Either yes or no, that's it, you move on. Now somehow it evolved, I think, tonight, and I'm not quite sure how, almost a site plan on this conditional rezoning. But I think, whatever, remember what we're doing, and we've got different procedures for different hearings.
All right, thank you. Mr. Faison?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Lambert?
Just a quick update, maybe when we might see the zoning language for the revised master plan. I know we've had a lot thrown into our laps, so, and I know you guys are busy, so.
Well, we, we
Was that a question?
It's, it's ten twenty-nine PM. Um, we, we, we're cognizant of, of schedules by, of, of planning commission staff consultants. We're also cognizant of the fact that, um, the, the, um, subcommittee, uh, requested that we meet in, um, in the, in the council